Craig, where are you calling in from?
I'm in Chicago.
Yeah. Well, I'm in Baltimore.
Oh, that's good. I could, I try to get home earlier, but it would have got me home at like, like literally now. So I said, you know what? I'll just stay and make it so that I, there was no interruptions or delays.
You
Council will come to order. I'll rise and salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In a true republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Please also remain standing for the political assass- the victims of the political assassination that occurred in Minnesota. Political violence in our, in our, in our nation, in our communities is not tolerated and should not be tolerated. We are a country that values discourse even when we disagree. And there are peaceful ways in which that can happen. Thank you. Additionally, we as a community are, are working on how to appropriately honor our indigenous communities. Uh, we currently, uh, say a land acknowledgement. We're working with the ordinance committee to figure out the exact terms so that, and how to really honor, uh, our, our native populations. So I'm going to read a portion of that, which says, "We honor, acknowledge the Massachusetts, Pennecook, and Pawtucket peoples, whose ancestral lands we now call home, and which we gather today." Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Crowe Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Here.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald. I know he's here, he's online. Counselor Seega.
Yeah.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora is with us.
Uh, are you able to hear us online? I, I can't hear what's happening in the room.
We can only hear you when we are on this screen.
Oh, there we go.
If you look back for the presentation from UMA, you might not be able to hear us.
Yeah, it was, it was muted. Um, we, we did the pledge of allegiance, we did our land acknowledgement, and now we're calling the, the, the roll.
Um, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
And so just because we've got Counselor Spatafora and McDonald coming through video chat this evening, all votes will be taken via roll call.
Correct. Um, under the provisions of open, the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meeting. Uh, so be aware, there are audio and video recordings of this meeting. Uh, before we take up the first order of business, we need to figure out how to get the presentation back up on the screen.
Yep. It is podium combined.
So under guests, citizens' achievements, and announcements, we would like to invite, um, Urban Media Arts who will perform, uh, who will appear, uh, before the city council to give a presentation about the new citywide community calendar initiative developed to streamline event sharing and enhance public engagement. Please, please state your name and, uh, your name for the record.
Leisha Ryan, and I'm the development specialist at Urban Media Arts.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Um, so the Malden Events Community Calendar is an initiative that we started last year, and we've had, um, some fairly widespread acceptance of it. And we had a very nice generous letter written actually by, um, Counselor Winslow, the Malden Chamber of Commerce, the mayor, when we submitted to do some underwriting for this to the Malden, um, the Malden Arts Council, sorry. So our big, this is sort of like an overview of the calendar. I'll give you a specific view of it and show you actually how in your wards you could use it as featured pages. So the purpose of the calendar is building a more vibrant, connected, and prosperous Malden. Why is it important? We want to shine a spotlight on all of Malden's offerings. At any one time or day, there could be six different events happening in the city of Malden, and that's probably, um, underestimated, underestimated. It helps event goers, like community members, and also people who are organizing and planning their events, understand what's falling on what days. So the more community engagement we can get, both from stakeholders, organizations, community groups, ward counselors, um, the more that the public would benefit from this. Again, everyone uses it, we have success, it drives, um, traffic to the site, and people will use it if it meets individual and collective needs. So people know what time things are happening, they understand that things are child-friendly, or they're ward-specific, or they're, it's a fundraising event. Um, if it enhances the impact of community events, we want it to be a dependable source of information and provide comprehensive details. This is our general timeline, it has changed a bit. Right now, we're in the process of, um, beta testing the technology. We do want to improve the user ability in the backend of it, um, but we have to be fiscally responsible, so we can't change our technology until we have underwriting for that. But we've gone through the process of staff training, gotten some initial stakeholders on board, um, some of the counselors do use it right now. And, um, we're hoping to plan for, um, a public launch in probably sometime after fall of 2026. Um, and at that point, we'd also like it to be, um, revenue generating so that it pays for itself. Uh, these are our users or stakeholders, Creative Malden, the library, the CCC, City of Malden, um, the counselors, mayor's office, the rec department, gaming districts, schools. We had, um, a nice presentation at the Kiwanis Club, they have adopted it, the Malden Chamber populates their events in this as well. This is, uh, your different wards, your different counselors. Why could you use it? You could use it to inform your constituents about what's going on in your ward. You could also do it for, if you're having like Fourth of July activities. That's a really nice way to get your, let your constituents know what's happening. So there's different features that I'll show you, there's venue pages, resource pages, you can make recurring events, um, the submission process form is not very complicated, we do have the ability in the future for advertising, you can have ward pages, you can have featured events. And then we do have some analytics on the backend. So we'd like the city counselors, if you could, try some, try using this tool, it's free, it's open, um, anyone can use it, you don't need a login or a password, submit some of your upcoming Fourth of July happenings in your community. Uh, let us know how you found the tool, if you want, um, something different, if you want your ward page to include certain information. Um, we've pre-populated all of your ward pages at this point with your pictures and your contact information. Um, and then, please give, give us feedback. Um, you'd like to see this, you'd want to change that, wouldn't it be great if it did this? Just knowing that this is the technology and the tool that we have now, but we do have plans and hope for something more improved and quicker in the future. And then champion it, not everyone, um, is going to use the tool, but if you have the ability to share this on your social media or at meetings, that's really helpful. And this is, thanks to OSA, who is a presentation whiz. If we all use this tool, we can put Malden, oh, please work. Okay, we can put Malden (laugh) on the map as a vibrant generous place to live and visit, and a place where children can thrive. And it does, I think, in the future have the possibility of, you know, highlight for Malden, uh, realtors would be using this, this could be added for tourism purposes. And then, if you have any questions, um, my contact information, felicia@umaverse.org, my cellphone, and the site itself is maldenevents.com. So now I'm going to show you what the site actually looks like. So this is the splash page or the homepage. We do have, um, some featured events that scroll through. Right now, the sidebar is, um, only actually shows up on, um, a desktop view, so mobile view is a little quirky, what we're working on that technology. And we've sort of selected some featured, um, events on this sidebar. But we have the ability to move things around. So this would be, if you wanted to submit a mat, this is the form. And it will ask you if it's a recurring event, a title of the event, what category things fall under, they're fairly intuitive, so, but if you had a question, you could always contact me. Every event does need a category, a, a main category and a subcategory. And then if you want any tags, and tags are just ways obviously for people to find the event. So some available tags are already pre-populated, like City of Malden, Creative Malden, and then what age group does this focus on, if it has a specific event date, if you want to upload an image, the event time, if you have a website you want things to go to. So, and then you can select from preloaded venue information, and we have pre-populated most of the, uh, venues in Malden. And then you have to submit your name, phone number, and email. We do approve the events before they go out, just to make sure accuracy and information is there, and complete information is there. But I wanted to show you featured pages, which is where, under regions, all of the wards are. So you have Ward One, and right now there's no events in there because we technically haven't had any submissions from Counselor Crowe. Yeah. So, but it's a great opportunity, we have some very basic information, just your contact information, but if you wanted to add anything in there, like if you had a subcommittee or another committee that you belong to and you want that on there, or if you see something incorrect in your contact information, email me and I can update that. Featured pages. And then I think, um, Ward Five has a lot going on. Yeah, so, so Counselor Taylor has a couple of different events already listed, her contact information. And then we found today when we were looking through this, that, I think it's Ward Two, already had some pre-populated ones, but I didn't know if it was because it, it, you had submitted it, or it was just something that occurred in your ward. And events can be listed both ways, so the event, um, the event contact person may have tagged Ward Two, so that's something else that may show up in your ward page. Any questions? Anything else I can show you?
We do have some lights. Uh, first up is Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you, um, thank you, Counsel President, and thank you very much for this presentation. I have used it. Oh, good. It's very user-friendly, so I will let people know that. I was very excited to see it because, um, from someone who does host a lot of events, I, I agree that we have such a hard time and we often double book without knowledge of it, and then, um, it makes it really hard and rescheduling, and so I think this is, this is great. As, um, a couple of questions too, I did see, so the revenue generating you were hoping, do you think that, um, you would either get sponsors or have people pay to put it on there? Like, how do you think that's going to work?
Yeah, so, we have to create a, a plan, basically. So the grant that we received from the Malden Cultural Council pays for the hosting of it for the first year, and then as we're beta testing, we want to sort of make some improvements and then have a clear sponsorship package or underwriting package to bring out to the community to say, you know, this is where your ad could be, this is where, you know, do you, do we want to put ads across the top, do you want to use a featured page? And have those types of options, and have it also be affordable based on community, because it is for the community. But we also need to be fiscally responsible for UMA and know that we are covering staff time to both be help support and, um, backend designers, so, and finding improved technology.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, we all know, we're in like a, um, hard financial time right now, so I really cross my fingers in anything, you know, that I can do as a counselor at large to help you, um, find some grants, you know, write support letters, whatever it is, because this is going to be extremely helpful for all of us.
We always appreciate support letters.
Yes.[1637.38][1637.38](laugh) Exactly. And I do know that others, it, it's been tried in the past, it's just so hard, not for any, it, it's really hard to get people to use it, right? Because I think it sounds like that's...
Yeah, it's the adoption. Okay. And the adoption process really is key stakeholders first, and getting their feedback of how we can improve things, and then kind of launching to the general community.
Okay, well, thank you for all your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. This was a team effort, so this is, you know, all my colleagues at UMA. I just get to be the one in front of you answering questions.
Thank you. Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to thank you for being here, I know that you weren't originally slated to present to us, I know that can be really hard, especially with all the activity that we have going on outside. You did an amazing job, and thank you for that. Um, and this is actually really cool, I am ashamed to admit that I have not used it yet, but I definitely will.
Don't be ashamed, we're just happy that you might adopt it.
Well, I love to be an early adopter, and I'm sort of sad that I'm not, oh my gosh, we're going to go to Ward Three and it's going to be empty.[1700.01][1700.01](laugh) I appreciate you pre-populating it, at least with my headshot so that it's not totally blank. This is great, because I honestly get asked a lot by the community why there isn't sort of one collection point for things, like, I think people recognize that the city website can't be everything for everyone, they recognize that there's official meetings and events, and then there's sort of everything else, and, you know, like Counselor Taylor has a beautiful website that she's built for her ward, but that is a tremendous amount of work that, um, you know, even if all of us wanted to, we may not have the technical expertise or the time. So this feels like something that could really be an in-between solution that I think is going to help us genuinely, so thank you for that, I will definitely commit to following my events there. Um, I'm glad to hear you're aware of kind of the mobile responsiveness and maybe, I hope, accessibility needs down the line. Those are like the two things that jumped out at me that I'd love to see as maybe a next phase to, to add.
Yeah, so, like, obviously putting into any images, hopefully alternative text, that people with visual impairments would have the ability to have those read out loud, those types of things are on our list. And we're not asking you to put all of your events in right now, but just try putting in a few, and then give us feedback, like, how did it go? Did it work? Are there things that you want to see improved, like you just mentioned?
Sure. And do you find that it integrates pretty well with social media? Is it best for us to put things on here and then share from here to our platforms? Okay.
Yeah, it would be awesome.
Yeah, happy to do it, thank you for letting us know about it so we can play around.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, will do. Okay, will do.
Next up is Counselor Taylor.
Is this better?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I just want to say that I am so excited to see this in its next phase and all the work that you've done. And just so everybody here knows, running this website is something that I did for about five years, bringing this to light and getting it off the ground and doing this much work was like a full-time job. And I was so happy when UMA took it over. And to see it become this just makes me super happy. So thank you so much for doing this, all the work that goes into it and keeping the community together and informed, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I do think it's important to recognize that Counselor Taylor, you know, you did help bring this to life, and I remember this was something that took, like you said, a lot of time out of your day.
And some of our earlier adopters are like, hey, wait a second, that was something that Ari Taylor had set up. And I'm like, yes, it is. She was nice enough to bring it to UMA, and now we own it or managing it. So, so some of our other adopters have a positive feedback from the previous incarnation, so it's very nice.
Awesome, thank you. And Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, no, I think this is great. I mean, it looks so very well organized and very straightforward to use, which is great. And I think, you know, it's so important that having something that we as a community have access to and can be a central point. I mean, I even got like a, some sort of notice about some property in Forestdale for sale, and it happened to be like on Valley Street. So some company in North Carolina is trying to do stuff like this, but it's, you know, you just see how it doesn't work. And the other perspective I have, when we first moved to Malden, I don't know if people remember, but the Malden Observer used to be mailed to every address. And there was sort of, and we had three newspapers. There were these type of ways that we locally could get the word out. And with the loss of, you know, people focusing on newspapers and social media being controlled often by people outside the community, it's often hard to get the word out. So I think the fact that trying to establish our beachhead, I mean, this is a great thing that we can do so that we can work to communicate with each other. So I will definitely get some stuff up there. So we did have the, I guess Joe and Rochan and Gray got something up there, so that's good, so they're ahead of me, but they're often there, but we'll get 4th of July and some other things up there. Thank you.
And we've been trying to, you know, we obviously try and follow everybody on social media, so if we see something that pops up, we will try and put it in the calendar on behalf of someone else. But we want to get out of the habit of that. We want folks to be able to use it on their own. So there's other technologies that we're exploring that would allow people to, say, for instance, upload events, multiple events at the same time, and just we would be the sort of backend evaluating to make sure accuracy and description was there.
And just from the chair, is, I know that the city has a couple calendars that even I'm still trying to understand. So there's, I think, like a public meetings calendar, but there's also an events calendar. Is there any way for you to tap into that automatically so that you don't have to manually?
So we have, right now, all of the city council meetings, all the subcommittee meetings on here. Anything that we cover as UMA, we've put in here. We did have a couple of conversations with the city, and we decided, because there's so many internal calendars, perhaps we'd start with something like the Rec Department. Like, would there be summer programs or something that the Rec Department would be willing to put in and just try this tool? And then, maybe we could get other departments to sort of adopt. It would be great if there was trash recycling information on here. But, yeah, right now, the city government stuff is things that we cover that we know are on the government calendar.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Sure.
I don't see any other questions, any last statements?
No, I just really appreciate the opportunity to present this to you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
And with that, we'll go to our next order of business, which is public comment. Public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to the subject matter relevant to this evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have three people signed up for public comment. The first person is Sharon Santillo.
Hello, my name's Sharon Santillo, 72 Ashland Street. I want to, I look around here and I've worked with many of you, very positive relationships over the years, and a special shout-out to Peg Crowe, who's my ward counselor. But tonight, I came in support of the presidency of the council, Ryan O'Malley. I've worked with Ryan since 2016. The art line was born at a meeting, sitting at his kitchen table, and we worked really hard to bring famous Maldonians back to Malden and celebrate them with murals and other celebrations in our city. And I've known Ryan to be someone who asks questions, to be very curious, to listen for understanding. And I'm troubled to think that here in Malden, we can't ask questions and someone could be taken down for asking questions. And I don't understand the, this issue in any depth, but I love our library and our art gallery and the staff at the library. And I just would like Malden to be a place where someone's not taken down because they ask questions. Thank you.
Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Gregory Zelt. I live at 51 Myrtle Street, 51 Myrtle Street. In contrast to the previous speaker, I know hardly anybody in this room, because I've only lived in Malden for about three and a half years. However, I'm here in support of the current president, Counselor O'Malley, because he's actually been extremely helpful in, I guess you could say, acclimating me to Malden. He has encouraged me and other new residents to Malden to be part of the politics and going-gons of this city, along with some other councils, too, but my focus is on the current president right now. So it would be very sad to see him no longer be the president. I feel like, I admittedly don't know much about the library, and I would love to see everybody just get along in this particular case, though I don't see a problem with people asking questions when there are questionable financial things happening at the library. So if that's what we're coming down upon the current president for, I think that should be reconsidered, frankly. Thank you for your time, counsel. Have a good night.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Mosalem. I reside at 64 Essex Street here in Malden. So I'm here to strongly oppose the censure and removal of Council President Ryan O'Malley. This action is not only unjustified, it's retaliatory and frankly hypocritical. There is no formal code of conduct or agreed-upon behavioral standard for counselors, yet you're moving to punish a sitting council president without due process, precedent, or proportionality. Let's be honest, this isn't about ethics, it's about silencing a critic. Leading this charge is the at-large sponsor, someone with one of the most extensive records of conflict of interest and abusive unethical behavior on this council. His ally in this effort, the ward counselor sponsor, is not far behind, but with only two minutes, I'll focus on the ringleader. The at-large sponsor has written and voted on cannabis policy at least 13 times while being employed by and tied to family businesses that sell alcohol, direct competitors to cannabis. He authored zoning so restrictive that it's now being challenged in Middlesex Land Court, costing taxpayers while costing Malden millions in lost cannabis revenue. He's ignored repeated warnings, including from a former mayor, and has refused to recuse himself. He directed city funds to his family's electrical business and voted on issues directly tied to his wife's employment in the school system. These are clear, repeated ethical violations. Meanwhile, Counselor O'Malley is being targeted for doing what we claim to want from our leaders. Speaking out against entrenched interests, fighting for transparency, and pursuing fiscal responsibility. For over a decade, he was denied this leadership role. Now that he holds it and is finally acting on behalf of residents, he's facing retaliation. Was his approach perfect? No. Could communication have been better? Sure. But that is not grounds for removal or censure. He responded to whistleblower complaint alleging misuse of public funds and took action when stonewalled. That is leadership, not misconduct.
You're over two minutes.
Thank you. I urge you to consider the long-term impact on public trust and reject this politically motivated and dangerous measure. Have a good evening. So we have a number of written public comments that I will now read into the record. The first one is from Patrick Hogan, 184 Adams Street. Hello, Malden City councilors, I'm writing to express my opinion on the above-agenda item to remove President O'Malley. I feel this subject is important enough to include councilors from other wards, but if this is inappropriate, I apologize. My name is Patrick Hogan, and I live in Edgeworth in Ward 2. I've lived here with my wife for the past 16 years. I have been excited and gratified to see many wonderful changes and improvements that you all have brought to the city in that time. Malden is an amazing city, and I look forward to seeing more improvements for families and seniors, such as the spot pond, Brook Greenway, completed in the future. Thank you for your important work. In regards to the vote to remove Counselor O'Malley, I ask you to vote against removal. If there was some procedural mistake made, I urge you to find a less drastic way of expressing your concerns. The library trustees are a public entity and as such are subject to open meeting law and other public disclosures. Residents having information about their public institutions is fundamental to a functioning democracy. Any attempt to hide or keep information out of view is a slap in the face to the people of Malden and an anti-American act. I urge you to defend democracy and join with President O'Malley in calling for the library trustees to follow the law. Thank you, Patrick Hogan. Dear Ms. Carolanda Zidario, I am writing in support of Counselor O'Malley in regards to Bill 313-25. I do not see any reason why he should be removed from his current seat as president. Apologies that I cannot attend the meeting in person. Best regards, Maria Jentco, 11 Wyoming Avenue, Ward 3. Good evening, I'm writing with regard to Agenda Item 313-25 and to express my deep concern over the attempt to remove Counselor O'Malley as city council president. While I'm aware that Counselor O'Malley has at times had a reputation for ruffling feathers, I've generally observed that he has done so in service of a genuine commitment to accountability and transparency in city affairs. Efforts to remove him based not on any alleged misconduct, but seemingly because he has asked the hard questions, are extremely troubling and suggest political retribution. Even more alarming is the decision to take such a consequential vote behind closed doors in executive session, removing the council president as a matter of public trust. It deserves public discussion and public scrutiny. To handle it in a way that shields the process from the people of Malden is frankly cowardly and undermines the democratic values this council is sworn to uphold. I respectfully call on the sponsors of this order and the full council to uphold the principles of transparency by conducting this process with the openness it demands and that the citizens of Malden rightfully deserve. Thank you, Alicia Garza, 54 Bowers Avenue. This, to whom it may concern, my name is Rashid Shakiri, and I have had the privilege of living in Ward 8 with my wife and kids for the past four years, as well as another 11 years in Ward 2 prior. I have always admired the city for its rich history, culture, and diversity. I also greatly appreciate the positive changes and improvements you've worked hard to bring to Malden. Thank you for your dedication. I am writing regarding the proposed vote to remove Counselor O'Malley from the presidency. I respectfully urge you not to support this removal. The right of access to public information, particularly in our libraries, is a cornerstone of democratic society. It promotes transparency, accountability, and ensures an informed citizenry. We must support individuals like Counselor O'Malley and others who work diligently to safeguard public resources and ensure they are used responsibly. The Library Board of Trustees, as a public entity, is bound by law to share meeting minutes and other relevant public disclosures. Malden residents have a right to remain informed about developments within our library system. Ensuring continued access to this information is crucial for maintaining trust in our public institutions. Thank you for your time and your consideration, considering my perspective. Sincerely, Rashid Shakiri of 64 Davis Street. And the last one says, my name is Sean Salazar of 59 Bainbridge Street, and I am a Ward 5 resident. I'd like to address Agenda Items 306, 309, and 313-25. I have seen tremendous progress for a vibrant, resilient, and diverse community, but also a consistent polarization and increasing animosity amongst the members of this council. Though I agree in principle that any legal proceeding brought on behalf of the city council should be approved by the city council, with all of the facts in front of us, there is no justification for the removal of the city council president. Many have witnessed mean-spiritedness and unprofessional outbursts, unbecoming of any public servant, often directed at Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Cologne Hayes. At the most recent joint CEIC/Malden Youth Council meeting, the conversation devolved into a display of yelling and insults, with our high school is showing more leadership and maturity. I haven't seen calls for resignation of any council members for displays of insensitive, offensive, and unprofessional behavior through these displays, though these displays have occurred, or a call for the resignation of any member of Malden City Government over lawsuits brought by and defended by the city. Staying silent in the face of unprofessional conduct towards colleagues, the internal animosity with caucuses refusing to work with one another, supporting open meeting law complaints against a youth body and displaying conduct below the offices you hold are all shameful. You should be focused on issues such as working with the library on funding, speed and traffic mitigation, making our community inclusive instead of exclusive, and attracting commercial business to take the tax burden off residents. We are in dangerous times as a country, and we look to our local elected leaders to be compassionate, inclusive, kind, and not fighting amongst each other, but fighting for the community. And that is it.
Thank you. And our next order of business is public, I mean, is consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, one appointment to be placed on file, two petitions to be referred to license, and one communication to be placed on file. Does any counselor have a desire to remove any of these items? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to second consent.
Counselor Winslow's motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes. The clerk will call the roll, because we have to take all roll call votes, because Counselor McDonald and Spatafora are joining us remotely.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Lindham.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seaco.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved, 11 to 0.
Our next order of business is motions, orders, and resolutions.
Paper 303-25, order. The council will vote on whether to sell or retain the property known as 21 Hanover Street and by city assessor's parcel identification number 127435518, as in accordance with tax title litigation and foreclosure action with the Massachusetts Land Court, case number 22 TL 000348. Sponsor is Counselor Winslow. Okay, so we are on Paper 303-25, which begins here and goes on to the next page. And the motion on this would be either motion to
And the motion on this would be either motion to sell or motion to retain. Understood. Okay. Councillor Winslow.
Yeah, we have our City Treasurer, Dan Grover, who can explain the purpose of the order and his recommendation in terms of what the city should be doing here. So, Treasurer Grover.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. First, I'd like to recognize the fact that everyone is here to support me today versus last time, the only person left was Jennifer Spatafora. So, I appreciate you all being here for me. Much appreciate. So, I've been up here a couple of times now related to tax title and decisions need to be made related to retaining or selling property in the event that we're awarded judgments. The last properties we discussed, the city had been awarded judgments already. These two properties are in land court. The reason why I asked that we discuss these now and have them determined is, one, we are expecting a decision in August. I know that the council breaks for the summer, and I didn't want to have to worry about trying to get everyone together in order to make a vote. So, this is in, to make a decision to retain or sell in the event that we do receive a judgment on these properties. We are working with the land owners, the property owners, through the land court. It is our hope that we do not get to the point of a judgment, just like it is our hope with all cases. But these specifically are in land court. They are the next two likely. One is August 8th. That would be, I'm sorry, are we doing both? Just a, all right. So, 21 Hanover is likely November 7th. So, that's actually after the break, but where these two are the two that are closest to getting a judgment. We could, in theory, be awarded judgment prior. So, I'm here to get a preliminary decision. So, in the event that we are awarded judgment, I can move forward without having to come back up here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councillor Winslow.
Yeah, I mean, so you're just looking for authorization in the event that you're not successful in negotiating a resolution of the outstanding taxes with the current owners that basically?
Correct. So, we're in land court.
Yeah.
And the current owner has until November 7th to come up with the money to pay, or some sort of solution that will allow the land court to provide them an extension. In the event that the land owner does not come up with the money or some sort of solution that would, the land court would allow them to delay, they would then award the city a judgment, which we would have to make a decision within fourteen days of that judgment to retain or sell. So, this, I would say, this, just like the previous properties, would be something that we would book to sell versus retain.
Right. So, this is, this is just a residential home, so that it really makes really no sense for this city to hold it in any way that doesn't have any significant public value, other than selling it and getting our taxes back. And then, right, so I would be supportive of giving the treasurer the authority to sell this property in the event there is a land court judgment in favor of the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Winslow. Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. So, I have a question about, just to have an understanding, the last two times I had to recuse myself, so I just want to ask, this vote, or you're asking to, if the litigation goes and you feel that they're not, you know, working and paying their taxes and stuff, it could possibly go to be sold by the city? And would that be open to public bids, so anyone could come? Like, how does that go? Because I'm, for everyone here, I am on the board of the Housing Authority, the most short, Housing Authority, that we buy buildings and we make them into affordable housing. So, if this is something that we could possibly buy, I would recuse myself.
Yeah. So, I would defer to the city solicitor whether you would be required to recuse yourself. These properties, yes, if we determine to sell, then they would be up for sale through a realtor. It's not through public auction.
Oh, okay.
The way that the tax title laws have changed is that it removed the public auction purchase process, and that's one of the reasons why we have a paper that's going to ordinance to review how we do all of this stuff. So, if we're awarded a property, for instance, 26 Central Ave, which we were provided a judgment, we made a decision to sell that, that will go, it'll be listed through the MLS, we'll have a realtor to, you know, take everyone's offers and accept the most competitive and reasonable offer. So, as far as needing to be recused, I would defer to the city solicitor. But yes, any property that we determine to sell would in fact be available for any person to purchase. I would not purchase it or be a party of that, because that would be a conflict for me directly.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know how that would impact any other person in this body otherwise.
All right. Maybe as a, I'll just ask to recuse myself, just to make sure, for future.
So, motion to recuse. Do we have a second? Second by Councillor Winslow, we need to do a roll call vote. Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Condon.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Malley.
Yes.
So, Councillor Cologne Hayes has been recused. Okay. Councillor Winslow, you have the floor.
So, I make a motion that we authorize the treasurer to sell the property in the event there is a land court judgment awarding the judgment in favor of the city in this case.
Second. Okay. So, a motion to adopt that, or we need a roll call vote on that as well?
We do.
Okay. On the motion to sell. Councillor Condon. Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, so that has been approved by a 10 to zero vote. Yep. Okay. Paper 304. Order, the council will vote on whether to sell or retain the property known as 78 Cleveland Street and by the City Assessor's Parcel Identification Number 167542273, as in accordance with tax title litigation and foreclosure action with the Massachusetts Land Court, Case Number 22 T L 000340. And the sponsor of this is Councillor Seega.
Councillor Seega, do you want to introduce it?
It's just on Cleveland Street in Ward Eight, so I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
Mr. Grover.
Okay. So, basically, everything I just said about the other property, this property is in land court, they have until August 8th, which is over the summer, so they're the closest to scanning a judgment. We have been working with these people consistently. We do hope and expect to have their matter resolved prior to August 8th, but in the event that we are awarded judgment, I'm asking that we would make a decision here to sell versus retain.
Is there a motion, Councillor Seega?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Condon. Do we need to clarify what the motion is?
So, this is a motion by Councillor Seega, seconded by Councillor Condon, to authorize the treasurer to sell the property located at 78 Cleveland Street.
A yes vote would authorize the treasurer to sell, a no vote would not. With that, the clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Condon. Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Malley.
Yes.
So, that has been approved by 10 to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Grover.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Paper 305-24. Order that the Finance Committee and Controller work with the mayor's office on a proposal to establish a solid waste enterprise fund at the start of fiscal year 2027, including an analysis of options to achieve financial self-sustainability on the fund on or before fiscal year 2032. Sponsored by Councillor Winslow and McDonald.
Councillor Winslow for the paper.
Yeah. This paper came out of some of the discussions of the budget as we were going through the, you know, in the Finance Committee, we're talking about, one of the things we're looking at is just all our sources of revenue and all of our expenses, and just seeing that, you know, over the course of the past thirteen years, where we have had revenue coming in related to solid waste, the blue bag, and now the tag program, the revenues are not keeping up with our expenses. And the reality is by fiscal 2032, when our current solid waste contract expires, that will even be more dramatic. And we are also, you know, hearing some concern that our Republic, who was our current operator, is looking at some potential clauses in our current contract that might even increase our expenses now rather than 2032. So, this is just, it's not saying that we will do this, but it will really look to the Finance Committee and the Controller and the mayor's office to look what, you know, establishing a solid waste fund would be, and then also looking at the options to see what financial sustainability of the fund would be. So, this is really just to analyze this and talk about this amongst the council, and that way the committee will also understand the financial issues here as we're looking at, you know, you know, flat revenue and inflation, these expenses just go up, and we do have to plan as a city for what our solid waste expenses are. So, this is just a really kind of a planning exercise in that, but that's really what it is. I don't know if Councillor McDonald has more, but, you know, that's really where it came from, so thank you.
Councillor McDonald.
Yeah, thanks so much, and I appreciate Councillor Winslow, you know, recommending putting this forward in the Finance Committee. I want to just underscore this point that we are looking at a structural deficit for the city, and we're going to talk about that with the appropriation order, the city budget, very soon. But I think this is a key piece. For the next year, we estimate we're going to spend 3.6 million, maybe 3.7 million, on trash removal, and we're going to, we're going to take in 1.2 million in income from the bags and the tags. So, that's a $2.4 million trash deficit, and that is only getting bigger year after year. Even if our solid, like, even if we're not throwing out more trash, the cost of the fees to dispose of it keeps going up. So, we are really thinking about the upcoming end of this contract in a couple of years and trying to make sure we're on firm footing for then, because right now, Malden pays less, our residents pay less, and our contract is less than many of our neighboring cities. And that's with this massive $2.4 million subsidy. So, I want to emphasize the value of the planning ahead, so that we don't see big explosive jumps year over year in people's bills or utility bills. But I think this is, this is a key thing that we're going to have to take a look at as one of the ways we can close what's now roughly $9 million gap, is begin to close the gap on the trash deficit. So, I am hopeful that this time next year, we'll have a better approach, working closely with the, with the mayor and his staff. I do want to recognize that, you know, trash is a, and recycling, it's fraught issues in Malden, and there's a lot of dissatisfaction. I think that some of that really has at its root, the fact that we have these bargain basement prices. And so, having a better system that is more sustainable will give us more options in the long run, but we have to figure out what that path can be. So, while, you know, in some ways, it stinks to have to deal with this, I do think that it's the right call, and look forward to working with my colleagues here to figure out a plan for this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to put the order.
On Councillor Winslow's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Councillor Simonelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Condon. Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Malley.
Yes.
So, before we take up the next order, the next order of business, the next paper, I do plan on vacating the chair for 30625, but I would like to receive my, or present my communication, which is Paper 30925. It's a communication that the council president will provide an update on the matter of O'Malley as president of the Malden City Council, V. Chairman Zozie, trustees of the Malden Public Library at all, docket number 2581C V 01275, and submits the attached documentation to support the discussion and for public disclosure. So, again, I'm just presenting this. I'm not going to be debating anything. The hope is for this to just be placed on file. The attachments that are included are a letter that I received on May 5th from the library trustees, written by their attorneys at KP Law. The second attachment is a annual report from 1996 and 1997, showing the, showing ex officio participation. The third attachment is the complaint that was drafted by the city solicitor's office, and that's requesting a declaratory judgment and permanent injunction. There is also a motion for a temporary restraining order and a preliminary injunction, which the hearing on that was held last Monday, June 9th. Finally, the last attachment is the decision from that temporary restraining order hearing and for the temporary restraining order as well as a preliminary injunction. And at that hearing, the judge in the Middlesex Superior Court denied my motion for a temporary restraining order and preliminary injunction.
Sorry. How much further are you going to get it? Because we haven't made a vote to even accept the committee report.
Yeah, so.
You're like going into detail about.
Understood. So, we're going to, is there, is there a motion to receive the committee?
Yeah.
On, or communication. On Councillor Linehan's motion to receive the communication.
I'm sorry. I was putting my light on to receive the communication. So, this is Paper 309.
Correct.
We've taken it out of order, and that was seconded by.
With that, the clerk will call the roll.
A motion to accept the communication. Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Condon.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor Brown.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, so the communication has been received. Do you want to now vacate the chair? Can I move to place on file?
Well, if, so the thing is, so at the last meeting that we had, I wasn't able to say much, and there was a lot of questions in the community as well amongst my colleagues about what was going on, and I didn't have a chance to explain myself. I had wanted to do that in executive session. I'll be honest with you, I'm still of two minds about whether or not to do this on the floor, but I've heard that people want to understand what's going on. So, again, that last attachment is the decision by the judge to deny the temporary restraining order and the preliminary injunction. However, the judge did not dismiss the underlying complaint, which will go on to a more full hearing. But I did hear what my colleagues had to say, and I have reached out to the defendant's attorney and have proposed that we dismiss the case without prejudice.
Are you supposed to still be in the chamber?
Correct. So, I'm just, I'm just giving, I can.
I think that you should be continuing this as the council president.
Councillor Seega, do you have a point of information, a point of order?
Councillor O'Malley, I'm not, please, I am not looking to upset you in any way, but this is a communication. I think we should just place it on file. We should have had this discussion before you even initiated the litigation, as far as I'm concerned. This is, this is way, this is way late. So I don't think, though, you should be doing that as the Council President. So maybe you just, I, I'm not trying to stifle debate with you or silence you, I just don't think you should be doing it from that seat.
Appreciate it.
I think you should move.
Thank you. So again.
Does it advantage you to stay in the seat? Doesn't matter?
No, you're right. So like, yeah, we're, we're not gonna be debating this, it's really just a communication, but, you know, out of, out of an abundance of caution, I will vacate the chair. I also don't have to do this. You know, I, I have heard that people maybe don't want to hear what's going on. I do think it's important for people to know. It is in the public record if anyone wants to read it. I'll vacate the chair.
Okay. One moment, I'll give you a light on. Okay, Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
So maybe a show of hands, who would like me to explain myself?
You might.
And who would like me to not explain myself?
That enough damage?
I understand.
Where's it?
Well, I'm, I am gonna.
With all due respect, it's up to the council whether we want to hear from Counselor O'Malley.
I make a motion to place this on file.
I, y'all, so just to explain.
We, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to Counselor Seega's motion?
I'll sit.
Okay, we need to call, we need to call the motion. We need to do a roll call vote.
To place, to place on file.
To place the communication on file. So for folks in the room, the, the agenda is posted online. The communications that Counselor O'Malley has just listed are all hyperlinked and are publicly viewable. Everything that he has just listed is all public documents that you can view in real time now. If you want to navigate to the city website, you can find all of the documents.
I just have a point.
Yes, one, one moment, Counselor Winslow, I'll put your light on. Point of information from Counselor Winslow.
Are we talking about putting Paper 30925, those communications on file?
Correct.
Or are we talking about 30625?
309.
So we're just simply putting those, we, we've exact them and putting them on files?
Correct.
All right, all right, thank you, Greg.
Counsel.
Yep, one second, Counselor Cologne Hayes, you have the floor. Yeah, clarification. Do you mean put them on file without being read? Is that what we're saying? Correct. So they're, they're linked to your agenda, so you can read them at any time. So what we, what we'd be doing is not engaging in debate on the papers or giving Counselor O'Malley further discussion on the paper, on the communications. Counselor Seega.
Thank you. Really quickly, Counsel Lenahan, two weeks ago, 10 of us up here voted to withdraw this exact litigation case, so I think it's irrelevant. I, I have no problem with accepting these communications and placing them on file, but I think that we already debated this two weeks ago, there's no sense in, in wasting time to do it again today. Whoever wants to read these communications just have to go to the agenda, like you just said, and click on the link, but 10 of us up here did vote to withdraw this. So I think that it, this is, these communications are a little too late to have a conversation for now, we should have had them before the litigation was initiated, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, again, no, no one has given me a chance to explain myself. You know, I wanted to provide the council an update in executive session, that was not possible. But again, the way this occurred, and I do think it's relevant, this is a communicate, usually when we receive a communication, whether it's a letter from the mayor or whatever it is, we read it into the record. I'm not gonna read it all into the record, but I do think it is important for people to understand how we got here. When I became Council President, I wanted to participate in the, the library business. I was told that I could not as an ex officio member. After six months of working, trying to work with the trustees, we got nowhere. The city solicitor wrote them a letter in explaining what the state law said according to the city's position. I reached out to other counselors, I reached out to Counselor Spatafora specifically as the longest serving, continuous serving counselor, and I asked him, hey, what do you think of what's going on here? And he said, I think you have the right to, to vote too, I'd support you in that. I was told to not bring it before the council, to not do this on the floor.
Counselor O'Malley, you need to really bring this to a much more summary point. You're reading the papers, essentially.
Which is normally what a communication would be.
We, we have a motion to place them on file, not to read the papers.
Understood, but usually communications are read into the record. But I won't, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave it for maybe executive session, but if we don't go into executive session, at some point, I have to be able to explain myself.
But that, that point is not right now, we have a motion and a second on the floor, we need to call the question.
Sounds good.
Okay. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
No.
And again, this is to place on file, the communication. Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Seega?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Winslow?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley?
Yes.
Been placed on file.
So are we going, so we, on 306, hang on. Paper 306-25, order that the Council President appoint a committee to clarify the relationship between the City of Malden and the Malden Public Library through its Board of Trustees to ensure compliance with Chapter 146 of the Acts of 1885 through a non-litigation approach sponsored by Ryan O'Malley.
Counselor O'Malley for the paper.
Thank you. So this, this was the paper that I was intending on vacating the chair for. The, the, you know, I heard what my colleagues had said at the last meeting, I was not able to participate because of the fact that there was a hearing scheduled for the following Monday, and, you know, the gist of it is, I have reached out to the opposing council and requested that the case be dismissed without prejudice. The reason why that is essential, what the council voted last, two weeks ago, which was to just dismiss, when the plaintiff dismisses a case, it counts against the plaintiff. That would have been an adjudged, an adjudged, a judgment against the city in support of the defendants, basically saying, ex officio members cannot participate, you do not have right to access the records. It would have really detrimented the city's interests. I have a fiduciary duty to the City of Malden, I have a fiduciary duty to the assets that are held by the trustees, and so that is why we took that route. I hope that we can resolve it in a, in a non-litigation manner, and I just wanted to give you that update. If, if we are able to take the off-ramp and to, to address this, I would like to be able to appoint a committee to do that. So I'm open to any questions, but I would move that we adopt the order.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, you know, I find ourselves being in a really surreal situation here. It's concerning to me that the fact that we had made, you know, as a body, that we had taken a vote, and our vote, I thought, was heard loud and clear, that we, you know, we kind of wanted to put an end to this, for the simple fact is that a lot of us councils up here really didn't even know what was going on, and that, that still hasn't changed. So we find ourselves sitting here again on how we got here, and it still hasn't been clear to me yet, and, you know, there's discussion on whether or not we should go in executive session or not, and, you know, I think it's clear that most of this stuff has been done out of executive session. So it's like kind of putting the cart before the horse, what we've been doing here, and I, I find it to be somewhat disturbing at this point, because I was always of the opinion that, you know, the Council President, that we elect as a body, you know, every January to, you know, oversee the agenda, make sure that the meetings are on time and, you know, on budget, and, and, and moving the city forward, and, you know, I, I don't really see us doing this right now. I mean, it just, you know, there's a, you know, a lot of people out here in the audience, and, you know, it's concerning, and, and I think one of the big concerning factors here, and I had talked to the mayor's office, and, you know, I, you know, talked with Marie Louisa an awful lot, and it's very difficult to get people to come in and volunteer for these positions, and, and we have a due diligence to protect those folks, that we ask to volunteer and, you know, watch out for the city, whether it be, you know, the trustees on the library or, you know, whether it be trustees at the cemetery, and, you know, I just think that, I find it to be disturbing that, you know, we find ourselves in this position. What, you know, what did we take a vote here for, previous Tuesday night to stop this from, 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 I think we were, we were, you know, we were heard loud and clear, and I'll, I'll be honest, you know, I, I, you know, I don't like to find myself in a position like this. I think that I've made this concern to all of us, that, you know, we get into politics to help people and not hurt them, and I think that, like, we have an obligation to protect these folks, and, you know, we, we haven't even got there yet, and I find it to be horrible at this point, that, you know, we don't know, I, I know for me, anyway, I can only speak for me, that, you know, I only found out about this, you know, on what's going on as far as disagreements go, and look, the way to do it, common sense wise, and I think we're missing a lot of common sense these days, and I, I think the common sense thing is to say, hey, look, you know, how did we get here? You know, what can we have done to, to make it easier? What, what, how could we have cleaned our side of the street on our due diligence and, you know, to protect these folks that are sitting on these, on these committees? I, I think we continue to keep missing that, and I just don't understand, and, you know, maybe the city solicitor's office can stand up and, and kind of give us a bird's eye view of where we find ourselves legally right now, because it's not clear, and I, and I would like to see that, you know, the, the city solicitor's office stay on point, and, you know, whether it be, whether it be Ali, whether it be Sahir, or, you know, whether it be the gentleman that, that's sitting in that, in that spot now, and we keep getting different views from different folks. I think as a collective body, we need to see, like, where is the, where is the legal department right now? I mean, do we, where do we find ourselves at this point? You know, and a lot of, there's a lot of unanswered questions right now, that is very disturbing to me at this point, on whether or not, like, you know, do, do we have the right as a body last Tuesday night to put an end to this? I just don't know how we find ourselves, and, you know, Counsel O'Malley, you know that, you and I, we've, you know, we've, I think we've gotten along since I came back on the council, and, you know, and I think that, you know, we have disagreements on things too, which is, which is normal, but I do, I just find it very disturbing that, like, if we as a body say, no, we don't want to move in this direction, and I think we made, you know, elegantly clear that we didn't like going in this direction, and we took a vote, and then for the next day to double down and continue to go, so what, I, I, I'm very confused on the body, like, you know, why, what are we, what are we doing here? I mean, you know, and then now this talk about whether or not it's the right thing to do to go in executive session and not go in executive session. I truly feel that it's not the right thing to do to go in executive session right now.
Counselor Simonelli, we're, we're not talking about counsel, about executive session just yet.
I know, I know, but, I mean, listen, we got to address the elephant in the room here, and we just kind of keep going around it.
And we will get to that paper.
So I, I'm sorry for taking up.
It's okay, we're gonna get to that later in the docket. I'm gonna take Counselor Seega next, thank you. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, Counselor O'Malley, if you made a motion to refer this paper somewhere, I would like to second it, because honestly, this is what we should have saw before we heard about you initiating active litigation against the Malden Public Library Board of Trustees. This is something I could have supported weeks ago. I really wish this was the avenue that you went in the beginning. We can't, as a city council, we can't sit and talk in a room with more than so many of us, so we have to form these committees to have these kind of conversations, and this would have been the perfect starting point to discuss the relationship with the city and the Malden Public Library and its Board of Trustees. So I appreciate that you finally put it on the agenda this evening, and I am in full support of if, whoever is the Council President, if it is not you this evening, I would be more than happy to work with you on that committee, so we can come to some sort of a common ground with the public library and moving forward, so everybody can, you know, figure out what, how we move forward with what, you know, supposedly is circulating around the city. So I, I, I appreciate you putting this on, I just wish you did it a few weeks prior to you filing litigation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, thank you for that, Counsel Seega. You know, you know, I, I think it was very clear that the council did vote 10 to 1 to say that we thought Counsel O'Malley had taken a misstep, and now I ask that people now, I think, you know, I had a good discussion with Counsel O'Malley, he listened, and, and just be clear, a couple things, what Counsel O'Malley has said tonight is that he's making every effort that he can to withdraw the lawsuit. And, you know, what the court said, interesting enough, we didn't have the authority as the city council to withdraw the lawsuit, because it was under his authority as Council President, so, so he is actually taking the initiative that the court even wouldn't allow us as city council, so he of his own volition, so give him credit. I mean, one of the things I say about democracy, and is that the reason why, there's a fundamental thing about democracy, is we realize leaders are fallible, and the reason why we have free speech, freedom of the press, and the reason why we have the balance of checks and balances is because to make sure that we can challenge leaders that are being fallible, so that they can listen and make choices. So I give credit to Counsel O'Malley for doing that, and let's, let that play out. I mean, I think that also, I have the experience, I mean, I have sat, you know, in positions like our city solicitor's office and on this, as Council President, and a little my perspective, I mean, I remember some of the times when I was somewhat junior attorney, making some decisions. Sometimes you look at, you're sitting in a legal office and you see a legal letter, you only think that something can be resolved through the legal process, and that's kind of what Counsel O'Malley faced, and, you know, that is a little bit what a solicitor's office does, but having been in the political world too, you realize that sometimes things are, there's a political dimensions to legal decisions, and that's what Counsel O'Malley found out, that's what our city solicitors found out. I mean, they're relatively new here, let's, let's, let's remember that, so.
Counselor Winslow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna quickly interrupt you and remind you that we're debating the paper on the committee, and we're not debating Counselor O'Malley at this moment.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just saying that, that the reason why I think this paper is important is that it's talking about going the direction that maybe if there had been, you know, a little step back as that letter came from KP Law and the trustees, that maybe this should have been handled in a political manner, and so I, I give credit that Counsel O'Malley stepped, is, is making every effort to step back from the lawsuit, and I think this is a good substitute, and I'm, I'm willing also to work on this committee and work with the trustees and, and look at, you know, other solutions, either through mediation or through legislation. I mean, this is an 1885 statute, maybe it's time to, to take a fresh look at that. Is this approach that we have towards our library, we're putting a lot more resources in, so that's a fair conversation to have, and we, just as we just spent time updating our city charter from 1885, it took, you know, decades almost to do that, it's fair to have these conversations, and that's really it is, and, and it's, it's better to do that through these type of efforts, so I, I think, I appreciate Counsel Seega's open mindedness, and, and that Counsel O'Malley listened, Counsel Seega's listening, and I think this is a good resolution, so I'm supportive of the, the order and willing to work on it.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. I'm gonna take Counselor Condon, and then Counselor McDonald, I do see you were gonna take you next. Counselor Condon, you have the floor.
Thank you for recognizing me. I, I found out about this thing when I walked in about two, three weeks ago, and the first, my first reaction was, well, apologize to him. How can you bypass an entire city council and think because you're president, you just move forward with a lawsuit against all these people that have served, against all these people that have served for years on that library trustees board? I was disappointed in the law department that steered him the wrong way, because the first thing they should have said to him, get. have said to him, get permission from the city counselors to go forward with any kind of lawsuit. And that wouldn't have happened. And yous all know it. Because you know the people that are on that board. And you know that they're going to do the right thing, and they've served for years on it. Thankless job. So, uh, I have a, I have a problem with this. It should have come out right away the other night, last week, I mean. And it should have been done with immediately, before even anybody went to court. You know, I just thought it was an embarrassment to the city council, an embarrassment to the city. So, I'll just end it there. You know, I've told Ryan how I feel about the entire situation. And, uh-
Move forward with it.
Thank you, Counselor Condon. Okay. Bear with me. Sorry. I didn't mean to do that. Um, Counselor McDonald, you can unmute.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President Protem. And, um, I really agree with Counselor Sika that, I think this is the approach that we should have, would like to have been able to have started with. Uh, and so I'm grateful, Counselor O'Malley, that we're, we're, you know, th, this is how we're trying to find some resolution. Um, and so I, I am supportive of a, of a working group about this. I do want to say my perspective is that part of the problem here is that there hasn't been a lot of good faith negotiation on all sides of this. And that includes those of us at the council. Uh, from what I can tell, it certainly includes what was happening, um, between the council president and the library trustees in those meetings. And so, I wonder if it would actually be, well, I have a question and then a recommendation. My question is whether the library, anyone from the library Board of Trustees has seen this order, specifically commented on it, or whether you, Council, Council President O'Malley sought any of their council about this. Because the order is very framed as the council president should appoint someone, should appoint a group to decide this. And actually, I think it would be better to have a joint task force of some counselors and some folks from the library Board of Trustees who are trying to hash this out and recommend a path forward in the name of transparency and fiscal accountability and responsibility and serving the people of Malden. Um, and I, I, I think that would be better language to start with. And I feel like it would be help, more helpful to have some direct conversation, uh, across our, across our two bodies, rather than doing this in this sort of like council president driven order. So, my question is whether anyone has been consulted. And if, if they have endorsed that, then that's great. If not, I would recommend that we actually just refer this to a rules and ordinance committee and then invite members of the library Board of Trustees. I've had multiple members of the board say to me, they are very willing to talk about issues and, and want a chance to talk through that. Certainly haven't talked to each one of them. But that would give us a chance to have some of that direct conversation and, and see, without trying to resolve the issue there. But just see if we can agree on an approach to how we're going to work together to get at that.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor, Counselor O'Malley, would you prefer to speak last? Okay. I'm going to take Counselor Cologne Hayes next.
So, thank you. I am in agreement. I loved to see this on, um, the city docket. Um, I think we also, two weeks ago, it was unanimous. We voted to withdraw the, um, the lawsuit. Nobody here wants to sue, you know, sue the library without knowing exactly what was going on. I came here tonight thinking that's what we were going to hear. Um, we don't know if Counselor O'Malley, what he would have said, because he wasn't allowed to speak. But we all love the library. We all support the library. I had said this before. My kids grew up in the library. I show up to all their events, donate money. Um, it's not about that. It's about democracy and knowing and trying to work things out before it gets to a point where we're seeking to unseat a city council president. So, I am in full support of this. But I don't know if we can order people from the, um, um, library Board of Trustees or the friends of the library to become part of this committee, if we can't, like, or just reach out and ask them. I don't want to assume that any of them want to be a part of this. But I would hope if we got together, maybe even hire a mediator, um, or something, um, and try and work through and get, you know, answers on whether or not they're a public body and what we could do, um, you know, and how, how to resolve this. So, I like this, and I, I am in support of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, I won't belabor the point. But to Counselor Semenelli, like, um, what I've been trying to do, whether it's in executive session or out here, is to explain myself. Um, I don't feel like I've been given that opportunity. I hope I will be given that chance at some point. Um, but I won't belabor the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'm going to invite our city solicitor to join us at the podium.
Thank you, Council President Protem. Um, I just wanted to address Counselor Condon. My name's Alicia McNeil. I am the city solicitor of Malden. I wanted to address Counselor Condon's comment regarding the city solicitor's office. Uh, the city solicitor's office did, um, the, the agreement was that Council President O'Malley was to come before the city council with this issue. The conversation was that there had been talk in the past about the city solicitor's office filing lawsuits, and how did we go about filing lawsuits? And we had that conversation that because there was talk about that, that he should address the city council. So, I just wanted to make that clear for the record. Does anyone else have any questions? I, I came down because I understand that Counselor Semenelli had a question for the city solicitor's office as well.
Counselor Semenelli for the second time.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I, you know, the concerning part about going into executive session at this point, and I, and I understand Counselor O'Malley's position to be able to explain to us, uh, on what has transpired, would, I guess my question would be, you know, that being said, would the, the people, the people that are being accused, um, of doing, of wrongdoing, would they have the opportunity to be able to come in executive session with us so that they can actually tell us their part of the story? I mean, if we got one body that's telling us their part, wouldn't it only be fair for the other body that's being accused to be able to, you know, at that point, face their accusers and, and give their part of the story to an executive session?
Unfortunately, the law is that executive sessions only for the body. Um, it's up to the body. If the body decides to go into executive session, if the body decides they're not going to go into just executive session, then obviously you can be heard in open session here on the floor.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you. I just really have a question, I think, building off of, um, Counselor McDonald's. So, I, I, I do think this is a good paper, and it should have been the first paper that we had to discuss this and, and figure out maybe that relationship before a lawsuit. So, I, I think, i, is it too late that we kind of already rung that bell and now we're kind of unringing that bell? Um, I, I do feel like, I'm not sure, again, with, if, if both sides really want, and what's the teeth of this committee? And is it, you know, just people that you've chosen? Is it, again, I think a joint committee? Is it something else? And what's the teeth of that? If they don't come up with the decision on, you know, how the relationship is, do they get the voting? Do they not get the voting? Does this, so, I, I'm not sure if, it, it, what happens if this, nothing really comes that actually puts teeth around anything that we're meeting and having these frustrating, frustrating conversations where it doesn't seem like in the number area, it's not just about the subject, but that no one's listening to anybody. So, I, I'm just not sure. I, I mean, I'll support it, but I'm not, I'm not sure that this is going to have the effect that it would have had if this is where we stopped, started.
Thank you, Ca, thank you, Counselor Crowe. Um, from the chair, I'll just echo what others have said. I also don't want to, um, beat a dead horse. But I do think that, you know, moving in this direction before litigation probably would have been preferable. I think clearly we have to make a move towards some type of reconciliation and clarity. So, regardless of how this vote goes, I think we need to get some clarification on the role for any future presidents and rebuild this relationship. And I actually see, Counselor O'Malley, you are being asked to be recognized again. So, I'm going to put your light on.
You, you can finish your thought.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I, I was trying to be brief because I know we have a long agenda tonight. I just really want to echo what others have said. I want to be part of a solution here.
Yeah. And for the, and for a final time, just to, to respond to what the city solicitor stated, um, both myself and the city solicitor wanted to address the council. Uh, I specifically asked that the, that if the complaints had to be drafted, that they be drafted and shared with the opposing parties without being filed. That is a way in which you bring people to the table to settle. And I was advised by the city solicitor's office that based on prior experience with the Board of Trustees, that they did not think that that would be viable, and that the only way the trustees would take this seriously was to file the suit. There was a time crunch related to a vacation by the assistant city solicitor. But I did want to come to the council, and I did not want to file a lawsuit. I was advised. I would like to explain this wherever y'all want. Just give me a chance. Um, but I'm not going to belabor the point. I'm not throwing legal into the bus. That is 100% the truth. Thank you.
Sounds like it's time to vote the question.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay.
I can read it again if you'd like.
That would be great.
So, we were asked to read it again. So, this is Paper 306-25 Order that the city, I'm sorry, the council president appointed committee to clarify the relationship between the City of Malden and the Malden Public Library through its Board of Trustees to ensure compliance with Chapter 146 of the Acts of 1885 through a non-litigation approach. We have a motion without a second to adopt this order. I seconded it. I apologize. I didn't hear you. You seconded? When I had my light on. You said if he, you said if he was- I said if he had a motion. You said if he was going to refer it somewhere, you would second it. He made a motion to adopt the order. Oh, then I, I still, I apologize. I was still-
Do you have a point of information?
Got it.
Okay, Counselor Crowe.
I'm sorry. I think that Counselor McDonald had offered sort of a, an amendment.
He sent it to go to, he-
To, to either send it or to change the words, that it's not just the council president, that it's a task force has developed. Um, so I'm not sure if he wants to, Counselor McDonald weigh in. Um, because I thought that would, that would actually be a lot better than what we have right now.
Counselor McDonald?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I, my recommendation is to refer this to committee so we can have a discussion about the details of what it is we're going to appoint. It'll take a minute to do this anyways. Counselor O'Malley, does that seem appropriate to you, to be able to have a, more of a discussion about the details, perhaps with some of the library trustees in the room?
One second. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah. I think the proper committee would be public properties, which also is the library committee that used to be a library subcommittee. So, public property-
Okay.
Because we're dealing with public assets that they manage and trust. So, I think public property would be the discuss, the place to have that conversation.
I, can I ma, then I would like to make a motion to refer that to the public, to refer this order to the public properties committee.
I'll second that.
I think it's public property committee.
The public property committee.
And it's, are we making an amendment on the wording around it being council president? Or are we leaving that alone? I wasn't clear.
I, I think we should just refer it to committee, and then we could talk about it there.
Great. Fantastic. Okay. So, we had a motion and a second, correct?
Yep.
And we need to call, we need a, a roll call.
Counselor Cologne Hayes, Counselor Condon, Counselor Crowe, Counselor Linehan, Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, that paper has been referred.
You can take up the executive session if you want.
We could do that. Okay. So, next order of business, we'll move, is that okay with you, if we move to executive session?
Yeah, I'm good. Paper, uh, 312-25 Order that the city council will vote whether to go into executive session with legal counsel for the city for the purpose of exemption one, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer or individual for the purpose of taking a vote on Council Paper 313-25.
Okay. But, and before we take up debate on entering executive session, I want to make a note for the public that the subsequent papers, 3, 313-25, 314-25, and 315-25, we will reconvene in open session to discuss those papers. So, the council will come back from executive session to take up the rest of the agenda.
Can I speak on the paper?
Absolutely. Counselor Sika, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So, this executive session paper is actually not one that I had initially asked for. I was, um, I was informed that we should put it on the agenda this evening in case we were going to be discussing Counselor O'Malley. I do not agree with it. I think that all these votes, including having a conversation, if we were to have a conversation, um, should be on the floor. We're public officials. It should be held in the public. It should not be held in executive session. Um, executive sessions, we are able to vote whether or not we want to go in, into them for a reason. And I believe that if we were to deliberate, we should deliberate on the floor. I'm not quite sure really what there, what more there is to deliberate on this particular matter. I think between last week and this week, we all know the reason as to why, um, we are here. So, I, I have no problem, I, I would with, I will withdraw this paper if I have enough votes to withdraw it. And if not, then we can just vote to go into executive session. It's the preference of the council.
Okay. Understood. Counselor Winslow for the, can you speak on the paper?
My concern is that I believe that Papers 313, 314, and 315 are out of order. Um, they are not consistent with council rules. So, we cannot take up those matter of business anyway. But if we, we can deal with executive session, I'm happy to talk about that outside of executive session. But I don't think we can take any action on those papers anyway because we don't have a, a rule that allows us to remove our council president. Um, Robert's Rules of Order does not allow us to do that without proper notice. And I think that the gist of these are essentially amendment to our rules, which, uh, under Section 53, we have to provide notice and we can't take action on, in one day. So, I, that's, I don't know whether we can actually act on the executive session if we can't actually take the action that's called for in that. So, um, so I, I just, they're out of order that we actually cannot take action because we don't have a rule to remove our council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. I'm going to take Counselor Semenelli, and then I'll go back to you, Counselor Sika. Counselor Semenelli.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, Counselor Winslow brings up a good point. And it brings us back to start. And that's, you know, do our rules, do our Robert Rules of Order, parliamentary rules of procedure, I mean, this is something that we haven't really dealt with. I know I haven't in my tenure. Um, what is the legal standing when, you know, this body has taken a vote, um, to, to put an end, um, to the proceedings of a lawsuit, and it gets overruled and doubled down? And where are our standings on that? I just, I'm confused. I'm just like, where, you know, do we have written documentation somewhere? Is it, can, can we get that in writing from the legal department saying that, you know, um, we have the right to Counselor Winslow's, uh, question, I guess, or, or statement that, you know, do we have the authority, uh, at this point to be able to, you know, have this before us? And what, what is the legal standard here? Because it's, it's, it's not quite clear to me, and probably to everybody that's out in the audience and a lot of my colleagues. Like, we're back to square one here. So, I, I don't know. I guess that my question would be to legal, if we have a legal opinion on where we're at at this point.
Okay. I'm going to take Counselor Sika, and then we can address that. Counselor Sika.
Thank you, Madam President. I, um, disagree with my colleagues. I have spent the good portion of the last week researching exactly how these papers needed to be put on the agenda for this evening so that we weren't called into question. Um, our Rule 10.01 says that the city council elects annually a council president to serve, to, to lead us into the new year. Every year, we, we, we vote to, to, to choose a president of our peers that will help, do you, what do you have? Do you, what do you have? 1709? Which one are you on? Yeah, so it's 10.01. That, so on 10.01, it says, "Meetings of the City Council shall be presided over by the president, who shall be chosen annually by a majority vote of the full City Council made by a roll call vote." We do that every December, sometimes January during inauguration. We choose the person that we would like to lead us into the new year. So 1709, let me see. 1709 says that we have a rule, "It's disciplinary procedures shall be followed as set forth by Chapter 20 of Robert's Rules." So in Robert's Rules, it says that we have the authority to remove the counsel president. So that's why there's three different papers on here. One of them is for us to suspend our counsel rule that we can, to suspend the rule for voting on a new president annually. And then we're going to vote to remove the counsel president and then we open up nominations to elect a new president. And I think people are forgetting here, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight that did support Counselor O'Malley. Hell, I seconded his nomination back in December when we elected him as the president for this year. And while we may have started this issue as a result of something for the public, for the library and the litigation with the library, everybody at home has to understand, Counselor O'Malley is not up here acting rogue on his own and he's his own counselor. He's one of 11. He is supposed to be our leader, okay? And two weeks ago, when he sat up here quietly and went home an hour later and sent an email to the city solicitor's office, not even sleeping on what he heard all of us up here explain to him about how we wish...
Counselor Seega, just keep it to the whether we can go into executive session, not the merits of...
That's fine. I will wait and do it at the next paper. So I make a motion to withdraw this executive session paper. And if I don't have enough votes for that, then I make a motion to vote to go into executive session.
Can we let Counselor McDonald speak? He's been, they've been waiting. I would like to let them have a chance before we take the vote. Is that okay? Counselor McDonald?
Well, thank you, Counsel President Protem. I was just going to second Counsel Seega's motion because I think there's broad agreement that this needs to be discussed in public. And I support that. So yes, let's take the vote on that and then have the conversation.
Thank you so much. Counselor Seega, I'm sorry, did you want to finish your motion?
I make a motion to withdraw executive session.
Okay, so we'll need a roll call vote for that. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
So that paper has been withdrawn. So how we move forward with this is if the conversation is not going to be taken up in executive session, then we shall move on to the next paper and debate the merits of it on the floor. If you're in agreement with that?
I'm in agreement with that. I was scanning your notes to make sure I was with you.
Are you ready?
Yep, I'm good.
Paper 313-25 Order that the City Council will vote whether to remove Counsel President O'Malley from his seat as president for the remainder of his term that was to last until the end of the 2025 calendar year.
I'm going to level set before we even get into this. I feel like we've all been starting to veer into this paper in our previous remarks. I'm going to ask for folks to be respectful, both to Counselor O'Malley and also please no speaking over each other. It's really hard for me to keep control of the conversation, but also just to have a tone of respect for one another as we get into this debate. And I appreciate that in advance. I'm going to take Counselor Seega, you actually had your light on first, so you have the floor. Thank you, Madam President.
I just have a point of order that takes precedence.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you had a point of order, Counsel Winslow.
The point of order is that this order is not in order because under Robert's Rule, Chapter 20, Section 62, talks about removal of office of any regularly elected officer of a permanent society can be removed by the bylaws. And there's two ways. There's very specific language. If the bylaws provide the officer shall serve for years or until their successors are elected, it can be removed. But if there's not that language about until successors are elected, they have to be a disciplinary proceeding. So our bylaws do not provide for removal. And so that is the type of thing. And then to have removal, you have to go through the, you know, that. So this removal process is not appropriate. There has to be, and the removal process under Robert's Rules is very specific. You have to have notice to the individual. You have to do an investigation and then you have to have votes. So we can't just do that in one night. So, and ironically, Counsel O'Malley and I have actually done something like this related to another organization. So there is a process to remove someone who's an official, but it's basically a trial process. Because we, our rules do not say, they say we have someone who's elected annually, but it doesn't say how we elect a successor. So my interpretation, and I asked for the chair to confirm this, is that we cannot act on these papers because essentially, and then I say under Section 53 of the rules, to change our rules, we also have to notify ourselves at least a meeting in advance. So essentially, these three papers together are asking us to basically create an impeachment procedure that does not exist. And that can't be done tonight either. So all these papers are out of order and I ask for the ruling of the chair as to whether or not she thinks these are in order.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Because we have a point of order, I'm going to invite our city solicitor again to come to the podium. My understanding is that the solicitor and the clerk have researched this before the meeting and that they're prepared to address the specific point that Counselor Winslow has made. Okay, it's the same point of order? Okay, Ally, you can come up. I'm going to let Counselor O'Malley make his point of order since it's on the same topic.
I just want to confirm that you have the 11th edition of Robert's Rules. So do I.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, I thought you were done. Go ahead, Counselor O'Malley.
Page 654. It says, "If however, the bylaws provide that officers shall serve only a fixed term, such as for two years," ours says annually, "an officer can be removed from office only for cause, that is, neglect of duty in office or misconduct in accordance with the procedures described in 63. That is, an investigating committee must be appointed, charges must be preferred, and a formal trial must be held." I would ask, what rule did I break? What law did I violate?
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Ally, let me just put the podium on. Okay, you have the floor.
So I'm going to ask the clerk to chime in as well. But so in researching this issue, the same edition, page 651, this is again, under the Chapter 20 disciplinary proceedings. And this, on Robert Rules, it says, "Removal of presiding officer from chair for all or part of a session." So if the chair fails to act in accordance with the Assembly's decision on an appeal or on a point of order submitted to a vote of the Assembly or otherwise culpably fails to perform the duties of the chair properly in a meeting, the Assembly may employ measures temporarily to replace the chair with another presiding officer expected to act in accordance with the will of the Assembly. So that's one part. The second part that Counsel President O'Malley is reading from, it's removal from office, and that's on page 653. And so there are two parts to removal from office. And it says, "Except as the bylaws may provide otherwise, any regularly elected officer of a permanent society can be removed from office by this society's assembly as follows. If the bylaws provide that officers shall serve for blank years or until their successors are elected, the officer in question can be removed from office by adoption of a motion to do so." The vote required for adoption of such a motion is, there are three different sections. A is a two-thirds vote. B, a majority vote when previous notice, as defined by certain section, has been given. Or C, a vote of a majority of the entire membership. So if the bylaws again, provide that officers shall serve for blank, in our case, one year, or, and that's the key, until their successors are elected. So that's one way for a removal from office. The second way, as Counsel President O'Malley was reading, "If however, the bylaws provide that officers shall serve only a fixed term, such as for two years, and, I'm sorry, serve for two years, or if they provide that officers shall serve for blank years and until their successors are elected, an officer can be removed from office only for cause, that is, neglect of duty in office or misconduct in accordance with the procedures described in Section 63, which talks about investigation and trial." So in researching this issue, the key to removal from office is what our bylaws say. And our bylaws are actually silent totally as it relates to removal from office. But the difference as to whether it can be by vote or by investigation and trial would be if our bylaws stated that the officer shall serve for blank years or until the successors are elected, that would mean by vote. Otherwise, if it says that the officers shall serve for years and until their successors are elected, that would be through an investigation and trial. So that's one section. And again, the first section that I've read is "removal of presiding officer from chair for all or part of a session." And that is by vote. And if you have questions and I can answer them, I will. But those are the two sections that we investigated, researched.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to other questions before I ask my own. Counselor Seega, I'm sorry, I had put your light off by accident before. I'm going to take you next.
No worries. Thank you, Madam President. I keep hearing, "remove from office." We are not removing Counselor O'Malley from office. We are removing him as our leader of the City Council. It's a rule. It's one of our council rules. It is not a law. It's a rule that we're allowed to suspend and remove him and open up nominations to give us another person to lead us. I think Counselor O'M... We wouldn't be having this conversation if Counselor O'Malley never filed litigation. He would be the counsel president till the end of December. But we are having this conversation because he went against 10 of us up here. We asked him to do something as a body and he basically told us to pound sand and he did what he wanted to do anyway, without any regard for how the 10 of us up here felt. That should, everybody should be worried if we keep him in, as our City Council President till the end of December. He is not, as far as I'm concerned, he is not trustworthy enough to lead us for the remainder of this year. He's not. He proved it two weeks ago when he went completely against us. If this didn't happen, if you didn't go about this in this way, this has nothing to do with the library. But we should definitely sit down with them. This has nothing to do with you asking hard questions. Ask away. It's the way you went about it and how you disregarded 10 of us up here and the way we felt about a situation. You should have, you're upset because you haven't been heard? We should have heard you before that suit was filed, not after the suit. We should have heard you before the suit. That is what I'm upset about. I had to find out from the Library Board of Trustees that I was suing them. I had no idea I was suing them.
Ms. Protem, I had my point of order. This is, I don't think this is related to point of order. You heard from the city solicitor.
Wow.
You write the ruling and then we can debate whether you're...
Counselor Winslow, seriously?
I have a point of order.
You didn't say point of order, you just yelled it.
I did say point of order.
I asked you not to speak over each other. I've asked Ally to explain the Robert's Rules and we're now debating what, the understanding of what she has said. I have questions. I'd like counselors to be able to ask questions to confirm their understanding so that we can know how to proceed. I appreciate the point of order, but we do, this is unprecedented for our council. We need to understand whether we're doing the right thing here. Counselor, you're up next. Are you ready to? Okay, Counsel Seega, are you all set?
That's all fine.
Okay. Okay, Counselor O'Malley.
Solicitor McNeil. Page 654. Do you see the fourth line down?
I'm sorry, which one?
Page 654.
Yep.
The fourth line, the first bullet.
Yes.
It's, I guess, technically line seven. It starts with the word "or."
Yes.
Would you mind circling the word "or"? Do you have a pen?
Yeah.
Only because this is a really important "or." I'm not joking. "If however, the bylaws provide that the officers shall serve only a fixed term, such as two years." That is one example. Our rules say annually. Tick. It's that. It then goes and says, "Or if they provide that officers shall serve for one year and until their successors are elected." There's two examples in this bullet point. We fit in the first example under this bullet point. We do not fit in the first, on the first bullet point at all because we don't have "or." This is really important. My rights as an elected official, my rights as a City Council President are dictated on this. I have a right to have an investigation done and a trial. I have a right to state my case. I have not been given a chance here or in executive session or anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor O'Malley, I just want to say that I'm not saying whether you have a right to or not. I'm reading the rules, Robert's Rules of Order and what we, the clerk and I researched. And it was the first part that I read and then what you read. So I'm not saying whether you have a right to an investigation or a motion. That's not my decision.
As the solicitor, you make a recommendation to the chair, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do, I do make a recommendation for the chair. This is a parliamentary issue, so I would certainly ask that the clerk also would be included in that decision.
The clerk being our parliamentarian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I almost forgot my question. I was looking up the rules. So I was going to ask if we had a procedure or process from what you were looking into on how, even our rules of order, on how to vote out a counsel president and/or vote in a new one. I've read them, but I'm a little confused. I'd like an opinion on whether we have a process for that.
In our rules, in the council rule books? No, we do not have a process.
We do not, okay.
It says that if there is no process, then we defer to Robert's Rules.
Okay, great. So we have no process on the books right now on how to do this? So in my opinion, we should not be moving forward with this at all until we have a process. Thank you. Thank you.
Process is Roberts rules.
We do have a process.
But for clarity, our rules often defer to Roberts rules when we have a lack of, either a lack of clarity or a lack of a spelled out step by step?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I think what I'm hearing that's confusing here is that it doesn't necessarily spell out a term. Our rules mention the election point per year, but not a length of term. Is that, was that a fair assessment of the difference between our rules and Roberts rules?
Yes, our rules say for a term of one year, yes.
Okay. But no, I think I said the reverse, that our rules say we elect someone once per year and Robert rules is referencing a term.
Yes, yes, that's correct. The Roberts rules reference a term, and we say, or your rules say that you collect, you elect a president per year.
And Roberts rules is referencing an officer, which could be a broader term, whereas our rules reference, is specifically referencing the election of the council president?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Condon.
Couple weeks ago, this council voted 10 to nothing not to go forward with the suit against the, would you say that was pretty clear?
Yes, sir.
In that he was being directed by 10 council members up here not to go forward and embarrass the city council any more than he has?
Yes, we had an order to withdraw.
Did he do that?
We withdrew the lawsuit.
Yeah, you would do lawsuit, but he pushed the lawsuit in another direction, is that correct?
I wouldn't-
Despite our vote?
I wouldn't say that he pushed it in another direction, meaning council president. What I would say is that he proceeded on that day with his motion, with the motion that was filed.
On that day or the next day?
On the day that we went to court, which was that Monday. I believe it was the sixth. I don't recall, but the day after-
It wasn't prior, though.
No, it was not Friday, I believe. I don't remember the date, but the next date that we appeared in court, we did withdraw, make a motion to withdraw.
So we did a 10-nothing vote, not to move forward, and he ignored the vote, and he didn't move forward. Wouldn't you say that's a problem?
That's not for me to say, Counselor Condon.
Well, I think it's a problem. What the hell are we taking votes up here for, then? He just ignored what the council voted. And he shouldn't have done it.
Thank you, Ken.
Another point of information.
Are you, thank you, Counselor Condon. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah. Ally, just on Section 62, the language about removal of presiding officer from chair for all or part of a session.
Yes.
Would your interpretation be a session is basically a meeting?
Yes.
That it's not for the remainder of their term, so, so that really, that's not what these motions that I'm, or these orders, these orders are not just for a session, they're looking to remove Counselor O'Malley for the rest of his term, so.
That's-
So that, that provision really wouldn't cover, so we're really looking at interpreting six and 63 then, so really. All right. So that was the clarification I wanted.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. I'm going to actually allow Counselor McDonald to unmute. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Council President Rotem. So obviously, this is, as an unprecedented and highly consequential discussion, we do want to get this right. And I also want to stipulate that, like, we could be here the entire night just talking about the procedure of this and not actually have the conversation I think is important to have. I think it's important to get to the point of this where Counselor O'Malley does have a chance to explain himself and, and his perspective on how we got here since he is the subject of this. So for the point of order, can I ask our city solicitor to clarify, did I hear you say clearly that it is possible to suspend someone if they, the, the presiding officer, if they are not abiding by the will of the, of the, of the assembly?
Yes, Counselor McDonald. So the section that I read in that Counsel Winslow was just referring to, it says that, again, if the chair fails to act in accordance with the assembly's decision on an appeal or on a point of order submitted to a vote of the assembly or otherwise culpably fails to perform the duties of the chair properly in a meeting, the assembly may employ measures temporarily to replace the chair with another presiding officer expected to act in accordance with the will of the assembly.
Okay. So what I, what I hear there is that the, the most clearly, like, the clearest way if folks wanted to remove Counselor O'Malley as president, which we haven't actually even discussed yet, I'm just saying, would be actually to, to try to suspend him. And it's pretty murky about what the process would be to formally and permanently remove him. And so if that's the case, I, it would take some time to figure out what that process is anyways, and if there have to be reports and dear God trials and so on, I don't know. But my, my wondering is like, could we at least start there and then be able to, rather than getting in locked in further procedural, this is a question to my colleagues, could we at least consider this as a discussion about a suspension until something is able to be researched or addressed? And if not, then how are we going to get to some discussion, or how are we going to get to some decision about what conversation we can even have? Because I would like to have the conversation and give us all a chance to actually talk about what is important at the heart of this.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. I'm going to take Counselor Semenelli for the second time. Are you ready?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. You know, again, I'm just trying to get back to common sense here, you know? We just keep muddying the waters more and more here. I just, you know, I, I don't really see us getting a, a clear assessment from legal on whether or not we have the right as a body after we've taken the vote, like Counselor Condon had said, 10 to 1. I mean, so, you know, where do we find ourselves at this point? You know, this is, this is unprecedented for us, yeah. But, you know, it's kind of on the, on the verge of embarrassment for everybody here. You know, I mean, I, I mean, I know, I would, I think my colleagues would agree that, you know, there are so many things that we should be working on up here to move this city forward, and unfortunately, you know, we find ourselves like, it seems to be getting like personal with, with people up here, personal agendas. And this isn't the city council that I signed up for three years ago. And, you know, I mean, we've really got to get to the bottom of this. I mean, we're either going to like, take some action on this thing tonight, which it sounds like my colleagues want to do, but we got to start moving forward here. This is just getting-
Madam Chair, I made a point of order, and it's, it's really on to you to decide. I mean, it's not to the whole council, you're the chair, so I-
Right, I agree.
I ask you, and then the councilmen can vote to decide whether they accept that or not.
I feel we've, we've asked our solicitor's opinion.
I don't think she's technically said it, that the three papers here are in order or out of order.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Would you be willing to tell us whether you find these three papers to be in order? I have my opinion, but I would like to hear from the solicitor.
Let me just get the papers.
I'll yield the floor, I'm good. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Seega, please be brief so that we can move on.
No, thank you. Attorney McNair, I've had conversations with the city clerk, I haven't had conversations with you, but I think that she's been having conversations with you about regarding these papers, because we were trying to make sure that they were properly before us. So could you just tell us if 313, 314, and 315 are properly before us and if we are able to vote on them based on your perspect, perceptive of the Roberts rules of order? Because we are able to vote on them, even though we don't have a rule in our council rulebook, because we defer to Roberts rules of order, which you have, you've explained numerous times this evening exactly how we do this. We, we have a simple majority vote to elect a council president every year. There should be just a simple majority vote to remove them if they're not doing the duties that we, we ask of them, so.
I would honestly defer to the city council, and the reason for that is because there are two, we don't have a bylaw, you don't have a bylaw or a rule as to the removal of a sitting president. And on one hand, it can be by a majority vote, and on the other hand, it has to be through the investigation. And I think that depends, again, as I stated, whether it's and a, someone who's going to succeed the person, or if it's an or.
Do you need an investigation to remove somebody as council president? This is crazy.
Point, point of information, Counselor Semenelli.
Look, again, I think we just keep going around in circles, and nobody seems to have the answer. I don't know if it's, if it's doable or if we have the authority to, at this point, outside council. Because I, I'm not getting any answers here.
No, look, the authority sits with the chair, the city solicitor is advising me, and our parliamentarian is the clerk. The clerk and I spoke last week when I agreed to take this part of the agenda so that Counselor O'Malley could step aside because we're talking about him. So the advice that I'm hearing from our city solicitor after speaking with the clerk, I appreciate Counselor Winslow's point. It's my judgment that this is in order and that we need to vote the question.
Fair enough.
Counselor Taylor, do you want an opportunity to speak?
I make a motion to challenge the ruling of the chair.
Can we take, can we take our, the light was on before-
Now where do we go from there?
Okay, it's okay, we can take a breather.
So we have a motion session?
I don't think she has the, I think-
We have a rule, we're going to look it up. It's okay. To make sure that we get the proper wording. I did hear a second by Counsel Colonel.
Are you good, your lights?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
So I just, I have a question.
The clerk is just consulting our-
[inaudible]
Okay.
The clerk is just consulting our-
Okay. So we have a motion to appeal the chair. Okay, so the motion has been made by Counselor Winslow. It was seconded by Counsel Cologne Hayes. The council rulebook does not say that the chair needs to vacate. We do have an appeal of Counsel Linnahan's ruling. So we're going to take a roll call vote. A yes vote would be to overrule Counselor Linnahan's ruling. A no vote would be to let the ruling stand. Counselor Winslow, are you, you okay with that? Okay. So a yes vote is to overrule Counsel Linnahan's ruling, a no vote will let her ruling stand as is. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
No.
Counselor Crowe.
No.
Counselor Linnahan.
No.
Counselor McDonald.
No.
Counselor Seega.
No.
Counselor Semenelli.
No.
Counselor Spatafora.
No.
Counselor Taylor.
No.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, so that appeal failed by a 3 to 8 vote, which means the ruling of the chair stands, paper 313, and if needed, subsequent papers, 314 and 315, are ruled in order, and so now they'll be voted.
Can we just like to formally object for the record?
I won't make a-
I'm not going to do anything else besides that.
Do you speak on it? Or what do you-
Counselor O'Malley.
I just want to formally object for the record. Thank you.
The meeting minutes will reflect that, so. Yeah, I, Counselor Taylor had her light on for the last paper. Oh, not necessary. Oh, you, I'm sorry. You're all set now, so you should be all set.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. There is a lot to unpack here, and there's a lot to learn, and I think one of the things that I've noticed over the past couple of years is we really need to tighten up our procedures and how we present ourselves and what we're doing here, because we can't really represent our communities if we don't, we can't be transparent if we don't even know what the expectations are. Since we are so up in the, or have been, there was so much discussion around what the next best thing to do is, I'd like to make a motion that we have a interim president while we do a formal investigation, giving Council President O'Malley the time to defend himself and, and speak what he, you know, his truth while also making sure that we're moving things forward, if that is reasonable.
So that would have to be an amendment to a future paper that we're taking up if we can do that. What are we discussing right now? Okay, Counselor Semenelli.
Thank you, Madam President. Look, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that, with fairness, but again, at the same time, what about the people have, that have been accused and the people that have been served? I think we kind of, you know, they're kind of getting lost in the, in the shuffle here and in the cracks, you know, because, you know, this, there's embarrassment out there, there's, there's, there's people that are trying to do their due diligence, and, you know, like I said, I'm going back to, it's very difficult to get people to sit on these boards, first of all, and second, you know, I mean, who wants to live in that kind of fear of, you know, of a body like this, you know, coming after them for just cause? I mean, you know, there's, there's a due process here, and, you know, if we're, if we're going to be fair, we got to be fair across the board, there has to be parity. You can't allow, you know, one side to be a little bit lopsided more than the other. I mean, that's, you know, that's, there's no fairness there. So I, I mean, I, you know, I understand, I agree, I think that this should, you know, I mean, I think we had the investigation with the city solicitor's office already, and, you know, I think that this body needs to start taking some action, and, and, and we need to take some action, we, we need to show accountability here of who we are. And, you know, we need to make it happen, and we need, we need to make it happen soon. These, these, these people have families, they have lives, you know? I mean, I, I don't even know how we, we really got here, man. This is just out of control at this point, and, and we seem to be missing that. This is unprecedented as a council, and we talk about that all the time, and I honestly, I think we continuously are muddying the waters here, man, and, and, and no one's above it, whether you're a city councilor, mayor, state rep, I don't care who you are. You know, I think that the, you know, the people that are serving on these committees need to be, you know, protected, and if we don't protect it, shame on us.
Thank you, Counselor Semenelli.
Do we want that for our committees and our volunteers? Absolutely not, no. But, they do take their job seriously, you know, the volunteers who are stepping up, whether they're paid or not, I'm not really sure. Some of the, some bodies are, and committees, but they know, I'm hoping they wanna do the right thing as well. And that would be to solve this and settle it, and not be just going to try to the worst case scenario here. So, I hope we can figure something out, and maybe taking some time is the right thing to do, and suspend. So, that's good.
You need to rebut Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Yeah, I just want...
You've spoken three times.
I mean, we're discussing this thing up here, it looks like, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Counselor Semenelli, you have, I know we were speaking on the point of order before, but you have spoken three times. I'd like to give others a chance first. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor, Counselor Winslow.
You know, I appreciate the thought of having some fairness, but, I mean, that was really why I was pressing that route. That was a route that was offered in Robert's rules. The councils made a decision not to do that. So, let's get on with it. That's kinda what I'm feeling, you know? Hey, you know, I pressed it, you know, that, you know, that is, you know, there was that process, the councils ruled. So, I, you know, let's not, I belabored it enough, so.
Helps if I put my mic on. Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Seega.
Thank you, Madam President. And this'll be the last time I'm gonna speak on this paper. And every other paper, I feel like the next three are all the same discussion. But I just want to remind everybody once again, this is not a library issue. This is a city council issue and who we have leading us for the remainder of the year. I'm gonna leave this with everybody, because I'm not sure if everybody is aware of this. But, the council president takes, is the leader of the council, but God forbid if something happens to the mayor tomorrow, the council president takes over as the mayor. Okay? So, would you be comfortable with this council president being the mayor? Because I wouldn't. If he can go against 10 of his fellow counselors on a decision that we made as a collective body, then he will do anything, as far as I'm concerned. And he should, he should not be... Excuse me, there's no yelling in the council chamber? And I did have the floor. So, he needs to be removed. There's no need for an investigation. Let's just vote on this, the next three papers, please.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor Semenelli, I'm gonna take you. I apologize, I misunderstood that you were trying to react to Counselor Taylor's motion, that you disagreed, that we were, that that was out of order. Do you wanna have an opportunity to speak?
No, I, Madam President, I appreciate that. Everyone knows how I feel. You know, I don't like to be in this position, and, you know, it's a tough situation for everybody, but I think we need to really move forward with this thing and decide on this thing tonight where we're going. This is, we're heading into recess, we've got the Fourth of July's coming up for all of us that do it. It's a big deal. I just think that, again, not to keep beating a dead horse, but we've got an obligation to protect those people who we confirm to sit on these boards. And, like I said, and the whole manner and the way it was addressed, like I said, I didn't know anything about it until I see, I saw the docket that we were suing the library. Doesn't even sound right. But anyway, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, there's been a lot of debate, but the one thing that I've heard that clearly, I think, was that when the, he gets suspended or removed when he defies the will, or the officer defies the will of the Assembly. I think that is the clearest thing, how, that's why we're moving forward, is because there was a vote, there was withdrawal from the city solicitor's office, but then he still took it. So he still very clearly says he can be removed because he denied the will of the Assembly. And that was the will of the entire Assembly.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, just, I want to, you know, reiterate what Counselor Taylor said about the process. You know, as you've seen, this is not clear. There are very different ways in which you can view this, even when you ask legal and even when you ask the city solicitor, or even when you ask ourselves. The procedure was not clear, and I sought advice from the legal department. Everyone I talked to said this was the right step to go about and to inform the council as soon as possible. I was told that the entire council did not have standing. I was told that I was the only person that had standing in ex officio capacity, aside from the mayor. This has been going on for 25 years or more. I just handed out a list of all of our active litigation. We have never voted to affirmatively sue before. What, the standard that you're applying to me didn't exist. In the 10 years I've been on the council, we have never had to affirmatively vote to take action. It was always the decision of the city solicitor. I went to the city solicitor with a problem, they advised me, and I said, "In agreement with the city solicitor, I wanna inform the council as soon as possible." I also said, and I don't actually want to file this, I would really like to first go to them and show them what we've drafted and see if they'll settle. Because of the time, I'm not throwing them under the bus, it was my decision in the end. But because of the timing of vacation, it had to be filed on Thursday. I apologize to the council for not informing you more. The one counselor I did go to, Counsel Spatafora, I did. I dressed with Counsel Lenihan at one point. These were real concerns I had. I was putting the city's best interests at heart, I was putting this council's best interests at heart. I apologize for making a political mistake and not letting you all know. I do apologize to the council. When you voted to have it dismissed, it's not that simple. And I don't know if the city solicitor or any of the attorneys in the room can try to explain this, because I'm learning as I go too. But, if you dismiss a case just without any other words, it's considered that the opposing party wins when you're the plaintiff. That would completely detriment the city's position. The city solicitor withdrew, left me in that hearing, and I have now reached out, as the council has asked, as you said, the 10 people, I've heard, and I've reached out and said, "I am willing to dismiss this case without prejudice, so that we can work towards a political thing. Give me a chance to take the offer, please." I think that there is a misunderstanding out there that removing me from my seat will remove my standing. There are two things going on. There is a backwards-looking declaratory judgment, asking a court to look at the law and to decide whether the Library Board of Trustees has violated my rights. That looks backwards. There's also a preliminary injunction, basically asking the Library Board of Trustees to not violate the council president's right, whoever that is. That's forward-looking. Whether I'm removed or not, the case can still move on. I would like to dismiss this case. I would like to be given a chance. Give me a chance to have an on-ramp, an off-ramp, please.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. I'm gonna take Counselor McDonald and then Counselor Spatafora. Counselor McDonald, you can unmute.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Counselor Spatafora go first, if he wants to, because he hasn't spoken yet in this sequence of papers, and I can go after him.
That's fine, that's fine. Can everybody hear me all right? Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you great, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. I appreciate the audience and all the public interest. I will just say this, Counsel O'Malley is absolutely correct. He reached out to me, asked for my opinion on the city, on the library committee. But there was never any discussion. It was really about his ability to vote bathrooms and some concerns there. And I just said to him, "Just proceed cautiously." And some of the things you have there about bathrooms, it's a public bathroom, and if they, if they need to do it over or they need more service, guess what? They're gonna have to ask for more city resources, and that's something we don't have. But the idea that I had some type of advance notice that he was gonna sue, to be quite frankly, that is just, whether he was applying it or not, that's not true. The other thing I would say is, there's no discussion here, and I think Counsel Semenelli tried to say anything, is he sued our head librarian. He sued our head librarian who's not a board of trustees. This was personal. And the idea that it was an administrative mistake, again, is not truthful. Because, again, most of this council, if not all of us, found out Memorial Day weekend. The email went out, I believe, on 5/23. So, there was no, there was no mistake about holidays and anything. An email went out to the trustees about the lawsuit. I then emailed, from my perspective, the city solicitor and asked her opinion. Counsel O'Malley then Tuesday had them served on the 27th. Again, there was no mistake. On the Tuesday night meeting, the 10 to nothing vote told Counsel O'Malley to stand down. Counsel O'Malley went into court and fought, he sat on the same side as our city solicitor and fought for an injunction. And the question I have to this council is, if that injunction was successful, I can guarantee you the tone of this council, of the president, would be much different. He lost. And the judge answered pretty explicitly. If you took a chance to read that lawsuit, he actually said, regarding the injunction, "Nor is there any discernible likelihood of its merits." So the judge was pretty swift to his action. The other piece there is, he wasn't gonna give it up. He wasn't giving up. He went in, even after the council told him to stand down, he didn't do that. And now we're told today that he's willing to drop the lawsuit. I know there's a couple members, I think, of the library trustees there. So the question is, and I'll ask Mr. O'Malley directly, did he drop the lawsuit, or is he willing to drop the lawsuit? Because that tells me two different things. What we're debating here is about a city counselor who's the president, who went around the back of the city council and initiated a lawsuit without anybody knowing. And did he throw the two city solicitors under the bus? Yes, he's, yes, he has. Yes, he did. Because I've talked to both of them. So either he's lying, or they're lying. And I'm not gonna put their reputations on the line, I think he's lying. I think he's lying about it.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafora. Can I give Counselor O'Malley a chance to respond to your question?
Yeah, it's a yes or no question, though, I still have the floor, Madam President. It's a, did he, did he drop the lawsuit, or is he dropping the lawsuit? Two different things.
Okay, I'll like to give him a chance to answer your question.
Okay, that's fair.
Counselor Spatafora, I'm not a litigator, and I was left to the sharks by our city solicitor's department that day. And I was, and when we dismissed...
Did you drop the lawsuit? Did you drop the lawsuit?
Listen, it's not, when, the rules of civil procedure in Massachusetts require a 9A conference, where I have to first, before filing a dispositive motion, reach out to the other party and ask if they, we can reduce conflict and file a stipulation to dismiss. I did that. I asked if I could meet last week. The opposing council could only meet on Monday morning. We spoke, I let him know that I'm willing to dismiss this case, I'm drafting the motion to dismiss. If the Library Board of Trustees will agree and stipulate to the dismissal, then yes, it will be dismissed. If they will not, then it won't be dismissed. Whether or not I have standing, though, is irrelevant. Yes, your answer is yes, Counsel Spatafora.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Spatafora, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think when you spoke earlier, you made it seem like that lawsuit was dropped. That lawsuit is not dropped. And I, and if the trustees, they don't wanna speak anything, because, again, I think this is, it's a good narrative right now, Counsel O'Malley. The problem is, is you knew last Tuesday, after that vote, you knew, it was pretty clear. It was a 10-nothing vote. And whether if you, I'm not a lawyer, you know that, but the idea of standing, you went to that meeting asking for an injunction. You were not gonna change your mind. You were not. And the injunction came out, and this is why you're at this position right now. Because if the injunction was positive, I would guarantee Counsel O'Malley, you would not be sitting there saying it right now, you'd be saying you won. Because the court didn't go with you, now it's, "I wanna work with the library." We told you last Tuesday, we all agree, there might be some questions there, okay? But one thing I will not stand for is when you are, you are putting in the minds of people, you wanna use the word fiduciary responsibility, you're absolutely right, you have a fiduciary responsibility. There's also whistleblower law in this Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So if you do know, that if you do have a whistleblower, that there is theft of money or art, and you are holding that from the trustees, that is a problem, because you do have fiduciary obligations of that board. If you don't have that information, or it's just hearsay, then stop saying it. Because what you're creating in this city is a divide, saying that there's theft, there's money missing, and it's a whistleblower. Well, there's laws to protect the whistleblower, and you have an obligation, it's also, you have a care of duty standard as a trustee, you should be reporting that to the library trustees, but you're not willing to do so. So that's not what the issue is here. So all I would just ask this council is, we sent a clear message about it last week, 10 to nothing. Counsel O'Malley didn't care. He went to court, supported the injunction, the injunction now lost, and that's why we're here now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafora. I'm gonna, Counsel McDonald, before I give you the floor, I'm gonna have our assistant city solicitors here, so may you take the podium. You have the floors here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanna clarify a couple of things. When the city council president came to the city solicitor, and they both met with me, and he explained the situation, the dispute he was having with the trustees, and that we tended to agree that this dispute was not resolvable, but we assumed that as, when the city council president comes to our office saying that a lawsuit is necessary, we assume he has the support of the council. That was obviously very wrong, and I will never make that mistake again. But, that was the understanding, that he had the support, or he was gonna get the support of the city council for this lawsuit. That was obviously wrong. Once it became apparent, very shortly, that this council was ordered, was totally against the lawsuit, and voted to order that it be dismissed, my office and I personally was faced with a completely irreconcilable conflict of interest. On the one hand, I in my office represent the city and the city councils as a whole. However, we were also representing President O'Malley in this particular lawsuit. There was only one thing I could do as an attorney, and that was withdraw. So I went into court that day, I notified the judge, Judge Camille Saruff, that I had to withdraw, and I couldn't do anything else, and that the city council as a whole had ordered the dismissal of this lawsuit, but Mr. O'Malley did not want it to be dismissed. So, I couldn't do both things. It was absolutely impossible for me to satisfy one client, and satisfy the other client, and follow both directions. So, I withdrew, and the judge allowed me to withdraw. That was my duty as an attorney, to avoid any further conflict of interest, and I withdraw. I didn't leave anyone to the sharks, okay? Second, before an answer to a lawsuit is filed, a plaintiff can dismiss the lawsuit voluntarily, without even consulting the other side. A plaintiff can dismiss it without prejudice, which means they're, they can, if they decide to, file the same lawsuit at some future date, but they can dismiss it entirely. It doesn't count against the person who filed the lawsuit. They don't need the permission of the defendants to dismiss the lawsuit. They can do it voluntarily before, before there's an answer filed. So, that's just a correction I wanna make for the record. Procedurally, a plaintiff can dismiss a lawsuit voluntarily, without any prejudice or anything, without anybody's permission, before the defendants file an answer. Those are the things I wanna clarify, I wanna... impossible for me to satisfy one client, and satisfy the other client, and follow both directions. So I withdrew, and the judge allowed me to withdraw. That was my duty as an attorney, to avoid any further conflict of interest, and I withdraw. I didn't leave anyone to the sharks. Okay? Second, before an answer to a lawsuit is filed, a plaintiff can dismiss the lawsuit voluntarily, without even consulting the other side. A plaintiff can dismiss it without prejudice, which means there, they can, if they decide to, file the same lawsuit at some future date, but they can dismiss it entirely. It doesn't count against the person who filed the lawsuit. They don't need the permission of the defendants to dismiss the lawsuit. They can do it voluntarily before, before there's an answer filed. So that's just a correction I want to make for the record. Procedurally, a plaintiff can dismiss a lawsuit voluntarily, without any prejudice or anything, without anybody's permission, before the defendants file an answer. Those are the things I want to clarify. I want to clarify that the withdrawal, our, our office's withdrawal was because there was an irreconcilable conflict of interest. It wasn't to try and thwart either Mr. O'Malley or the city council in any way. We were required, under the ethical rules governing lawyers, to withdraw. And I'm not happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Zehir. Counselor Winslow?
Just, Zehir, to clarify, you mentioned about you can dismiss without prejudice before the answer. When was the answer, was the answer filed before-
Answer was filed this, this week. It was filed this week, a few days ago.
Was filed before or after the hearing?
It was filed after the hearing. It was, the answer was filed very recently, like within, like this week, within the last few days.
All right, thank you. Just clarifying. Thank you.
For your information?
Counselor O'Malley?
It was, our hearing was the, the ninth. My understanding is the answer was filed the 12th. That's my understanding.
No, it was last week. Excuse me. Today's Tuesday. But it was filed after the hearing.
But again, I'm not a litigator. I never intended to do this on my own. I'm just trying to represent the best interest of the city and this council. I did make a political mistake. As, as the attorney stated, we thought that the council would support this. We thought that we were doing what was in the best interest of the city. Literally, no one I talked to said, don't do this. It wasn't until we filed that I heard that. So again, mea culpa. But everyone I spoke to said, this makes sense to go this route. That was a mistake, as was stated. I'm not blaming the city solicitor for that. Let me take the off-ramp, please.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor McDonald has been so, so patiently waiting. Counselor McDonald, you can unmute. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, assistant city solicitors to me, just very quickly. So this point about, this feels like a key point to me, about the ability to unilaterally dismiss a lawsuit. Are you saying that Counselor O'Malley had that ability, or still has that ability, to dismiss the lawsuit unilaterally without pres, without prejudice?
So, there's, there's a timeline. Before a defendant answers a lawsuit, a plaintiff, including Council President O'Malley, can dismiss the lawsuit voluntarily, without prejudice, without consulting the other side. In fact, I've done that before. You know, you file a lawsuit, things change suddenly, and you just dismiss it. You don't even have to notify the other side. Once the defendants file, respond to that lawsuit by filing an answer, and I forgot it was Tuesday, so it was, it was last week that they filed an answer, and it was a few days after the injunction hearing on the ninth. Once they file an answer, then the plaintiff cannot unilaterally dismiss it. In that case, the, the plaintiff has to either consult with the other side, or file a motion, and get the court's permission to dismiss it. But before a lawsuit is responded to, under the civil, the court rules, a plaintiff can just dismiss it unilaterally.
Okay, so we're no longer at that point in the case?
That's right. Once, once the, once the defendants, the trustees filed an answer to the lawsuit, then it can't just be unilaterally dismissed. You have to either file a motion to dismiss, which I, I imagine the trustees wouldn't oppose if, if they did that. If the Counselor O'Malley did that, he could file a motion to dismiss, voluntarily dismiss, and I can't imagine the trustees would oppose that. And I can't imagine why the court wouldn't be happy to, you know, remove another case from its docket either.
And, and if that motion to voluntarily dismiss effectively enters a judgment again, in favor of the defendants?
No, not necessarily. That depends on the terms of the dismissal. If the dismissal's without prejudice, then it's, it's as if, it's sort of as if the lawsuit had never been filed, and there's no, there's no decision one way or another, as to who won or who lost. If the decision is with prejudice, what that means is, that plaintiff, that particular plaintiff, can never file the same lawsuit again. Now, as a practical matter, you know, Counsel, Counselor O'Malley is, you know, currently the president. Even if he dismissed with prejudice, I don't know if that would bind a future city council or a future city council president. But that's what, you know, the dismissal, the voluntarily dismissal, usually it's without prejudice. And that's like, nobody's won and nobody's lost. It's just sort of like the lawsuit goes away.
Okay. So the, the 9A conference, the Counselor O'Malley was referencing, is that necessary for a-
It's actually a Rule 9C conference, but-
9C conference, then? Thank you.
But I, I know what he's talking about. So the Rule 9C conference is, you know, when a party wants to file a motion, they're obligated, under the court rules, for most motions, to actually reach out to the other side and confer. And the purpose of that, that conference is so that sometimes the lawyers or the parties can actually bring an issue before the court, because there's a dispute or a disagreement. But if they confer beforehand, you can narrow the areas of disagreement. And that makes everybody's job easier, including the court's job. So that's what he's referring to. So, you know, if he wanted to file a motion to dismiss, you know, he could have a Rule 9C conference with the lawyer for the defendants, and I can't imagine that the lawyer for the defendants is, is going to say, no, I disagree. I don't want you to dismiss the lawsuit. He'd probably say, yeah, sure, you know, just, we'll dismiss it. And it could just be an assented-to motion. In other words, it wouldn't be contested. So that, procedurally, that's how, that's one way now to dismiss the lawsuit, if it were going to be dismissed.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I don't have any other questions for you. But if I can speak to the underlying motion, is that okay, Counsel President?
That's fine, Counselor McDonald.
Okay. So I, 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 I think I understand a little bit of the ins and outs of how we got here. And what I want to say is, you know, the word that stuck out to me in the, in the description of the Roberts rules, whole discussion of removal of officers, was the word misconduct. Misconduct is behavior that's beneath an office, that is not in keeping with the office. It's really, I think, an abuse of the office and an abuse of trust. And what I want to say, Counselor O'Malley, is that I count you a friend, and I think that you really broke the trust of your colleagues in this particular, in this particular situation, and the trust of a lot of other leaders. That's not a legal issue. I think it's, it's more than a political issue. I think it's a leadership issue. And so I am somebody who wants to give people additional chances. I do want to create the possibility for an appropriate and amicable resolution with the leaders of, of the Malden Public Library, beloved community institution. But in order to do that, I need to be able to believe that you fully understand that gap in trust. I think you worked really hard to build up the trust to be the council president. That's why I was excited to support you. And I think that in order to be able to continue the rest of your term, you'd have to show that you can, in fact, rebuild enough of that trust to proceed. And that's just different from the legal standing questions. It's just a different question. And so my question to you is whether you can give us your word that you understand that trust gap, that you can work to repair it, and that you will be prioritizing that restoration of relationship over the, first, over the resolution of the issue. I do not believe that we can resolve this set of issues with the library until we reestablish some of the trust that is necessary for a working relationship. And do you believe that you can do those things? And I, and I feel like my vote on this motion hinges on, on whether you believe that you can deliver on that leadership challenge. So I, I would like to ask you to respond to that question, if you would be willing.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. I am going to give Counselor O'Malley a moment to respond.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. You know, we spoke last week, and I committed to you that I would move forward with dismissing the case. And that's exactly what I did. I, I am trying to take the off-ramp and rebuild trust with my, with the council. I apologize. I'm telling you, I, I did not, did not see any of this coming. I never would have decided to go down this route, had I thought this was going to happen. I never wanted to go down this route. I really wanted this to be resolved. So yes, I look and promise to rebuild the trust. I do want to just inform you that I handed out an email communication between myself and the opposing council. We received the answer on June, on Thursday, June 12th, just a couple of days after the, the last hearing. I responded back the next day on, on Friday, saying, good morning, I'm in receipt of the answer. I would like to request to confer over the phone and discuss a motion I intend to file. Does today, Friday, or Monday, the 16th work for you? The opposing council said that he would be willing to meet at 11:00 a.m. on Monday. We spoke. After the email, I, I followed up, basically saying to the opposing council, thank you for taking the time to confer yesterday regarding the potential settlement and the filing of a motion to dismiss to resolve the matter. I'm still preparing the formal motion, but here is the high-level proposal. One, that the plaintiff file a motion to dismiss without prejudice. Two, that the defendants agree to work with the city of Malden in good faith, including providing access to relevant records to clarify their relationship between the city of Malden and the Malden Public Library, and that both parties agree to give weight to the legislative, legislation chartering the library, as well as the past pattern and practice of the Library Board of Trustees. And three, that both parties neither admits wrongdoing or admits any weakness in their underlying positions. If you think there are any other relevant terms, please let me know. Please suggest them. So yes, I, I am trying to do exactly what you all have asked me to do. I, I am learning as I go. I hope I can rebuild your trust.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Before we go back to the room, Counselor Spatafor, do you have your hand up again?
I do, I do. I'd like Zehir to come back up to the, the podium, please.
Can you repeat that? I'm so sorry.
Attorney Zehir, can you come back up to the podium?
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Spatafor.
Counselor, yeah, I, I believe, you know, when you came, when you came up there, I don't, I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but Counselor O'Malley said you threw him to the sharks. Is that true?
No, I didn't throw anybody to the sharks.
Oh, no, I'm just repeating what he said. I'm asking, because he just said it. So my question is, did you throw him to the sharks? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, okay.
I was duty-bound to withdraw.
Okay, and I believe, I believe in Counselor O'Malley's statement, he said, he said, I had no idea that no, no one I talked to told me this was going to be a problem with the lawsuit. It's a very good statement. That's how smart Counselor O'Malley is. The problem was, he didn't talk to anybody. Because nobody knew about the lawsuit. So, Zehir, you sent that email out, I believe, to the library trustees on the Friday before Memorial Day. Is that correct?
Yes.
Who told you to send that out?
Well, nobody specifically told me. That was just, when you, when you sue somebody, you got to notify them.
And did, did Counselor O'Malley tell you he talked to the council?
No, not specifically.
Okay. So, so-
No, he didn't, he didn't tell me he talked to the council, no.
Okay. So, so nobody knew about the lawsuit. You sent the, you sent it out, right, on, on the, I believe, the 23rd, correct?
That sounds right.
Okay. And then, and then the, the council met the following Tuesday, which was a 10-nothing vote. And Counselor O'Malley then went to court, and you sat on the same side, right, because you had to, because you had that conflict. Is that correct?
Repeat that.
So, so after Counselor O'Malley, we had the Tuesday meeting, which, which was a 10-nothing voter, you were not here, correct?
That's right. Yeah, I hadn't returned yet.
Okay. And then you went to court. I don't know what day you went to court. You, you, you took the, the will of the council and dismissed that lawsuit, correct?
Yes. And I went to court and explained to the judge the, that I was under a conflict, and I, that I needed to withdraw. And I explained to the judge that the reason I was under a conflict is because the city council wanted this lawsuit dismissed, and Counselor O'Malley didn't want it dismissed. So I couldn't do anything, and I just had to withdraw.
All right. So I just want the council to hear that. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to work with counsel, and he's going to work with the libraries, the trustees. Tuesday night, he gets voted 10-nothing. He goes to court and files an injunction. Not because we, we told him to do, he didn't care. He didn't care. Let's be very honest. He didn't care. He understood our wish. And we, we, and I talked to every library, most of the library trustees. They've always been willing to talk to us. Okay? Now, let me ask you a question, because I'm not an attorney. Counselor O'Malley mentioned a couple of things that he, he asked their attorney to agree to as part of dismissing the lawsuit. If the library trustees, or their attorney, collectively disagree on all those items, what happens?
Well, then the lawsuit's not dismissed. I mean, typically, typically what happens is, based on everything that the city, I've heard from the city council tonight, it makes sense to have a dialogue with the trustees of some sort, whether it's, you know, through the paper that you just referred to, the Public Properties Committee, or however. That certainly makes, makes sense. It's, it would certainly facilitate dialogue if this lawsuit were dismissed without prejudice. But typically, when you dismiss a lawsuit without prejudice, it's literally like, like one sentence saying, you know, the parties agree to dismiss this lawsuit without prejudice, filed with the court, the court, the judge looks at it and goes, great, less work on my desk, allowed. And that, that would allow the city council and the trustees and the library, if they want to, to have a dialogue without this lawsuit hanging over them. And, you know, it doesn't make sense to have a dismissal, but I demand that you do X, Y, and Z. You know, that's not, you know, that's not really necessary.
Okay. I appreciate it. So I want to say that, Counselor Lenny, I'd like to ask Counselor O'Malley, direct question. Counselor O'Malley, will you agree to drop that lawsuit right now without prejudice and no agreement, with nothing else than that, that one sentence?
Do you wish to respond?
Yeah, without prejudice, yeah, I'm willing to do that.
With no other demands?
Yeah, and cor, correct. Because since I now have the documents that show ex officios can participate. I was, I went and I did my research in the old section, after another whistleblower sent us stuff. I think you all received it. So I knew what to look for. That's all I was asking for.
Again, again, you keep on saying whistleblower. I haven't received anything out of whistleblower. I haven't received anything. And I would tell you, if I, if I get a whistleblower, I would tell our attorneys. So I don't know, so you, but you, you, hold on. Counselor O'Malley, one second, I have the floor. You just said, four minutes ago, and by the way, Zehir came up there, and basically, I, I'm going to be very honest with you, Counselor O'Malley, you lied. Because you, you lied. And that's why I think Zehir got up there, because you lied. However you want to put it, you lied. So the second thing is, you just said that you sent the attorneys this long docket. Now you're willing to drop this docket down. This is the challenge. This is the challenge. We met, we, we met on Tuesday and told you, no. You go in there anyways and file for an injunction. And I keep saying it, if that injunction was successful, I can guarantee you, you would be doing the same thing you did that, that day in court, and saying, I don't care, I have standing, I'm going forward. And at the end of the day, we have a library board of trustees, which we know is partially private, spending their legal money, defending a lawsuit that we never started. We have a city librarian who's, who's been named in it, who doesn't have an attorney, because there's a conflict. Okay? And, and you're suing the library, and there's no cost to you. There's no cost to you. And the board said, stand down. That's why I have a challenge believing that all of a sudden, next Tuesday, you're going to go into the library and say, you know, I made a mistake, the council told me. You never talked to anybody in the council. You never talked to anybody about this. That's why we're here. I appreciate Counselor McDonald's willingness to work, but I just feel like this has been a series of, of, of constant and deliberate attempts to circumvent the council. When we told him not to do it, he continued to do it. And when the judge said, no injunction, he still didn't stand down. And the idea that this is going to change is ridiculous. And, and I, I, I'll be honest with you, my friends in the, in the council and the colleagues, you know what? Don't sit there and say your friends the library. When they, when they're using money, that should be good for programming and buying art, but they're, they're, they're defending the lawsuit. You can't have it both ways. Everybody knows this is nonsense. And we have a librarian that nobody wants to talk with, doesn't, doesn't have legal representation. And we're a community about building up minorities and women. We're shooting her down. She doesn't have an attorney. Is anybody here willing to be, I mean, there's a couple attorneys on, on the, is anybody willing to be an attorney for the, for the librarian? Because all we care about is how Counselor O'Malley feels right now. But we're, we're spinning our wheels with, hey, we told you last Tuesday, and you still went in and asked for an injunction. So I, I, I mean, I apologize for ranting and raving, but I've seen this, I've seen how this movie ends. I thought it was pretty clear Tuesday. And I even thought about, maybe Counselor O'Malley will drop it and will move forward. I don't think he's going to move forward. This is just another way for him to buy some time. And then you, you heard what he asked, all the, the lawsuit to happen with the- the lawsuit to happen with the libraries. This is a personality thing. He's not willing to work with people. He has trouble working with people. We know this. We know this. So I think it was very clear, that 10-0 vote, and if it had been this counsel thinks it wasn't clear, then we should have a sidebar. But let's be honest, he went in there with the intent to stop, to continue that lawsuit. He didn't drop it. He just threw our two city solicitors under the bus. He says the timeline, that just, it's broken. There was a holiday. Again, nobody knew. And then served them on the Tuesday. So we knew what the intent was. We knew what the intent was. And now we're just going to forget, let bygones be bygones. I'm sorry, I'm willing to move forward. Thank you, Madam President, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafora. Counselor O'Malley, I'm going to give you one more chance to respond, if you'd like, before I go to the other lights.
Yeah, just to clarify, Counselor Spatafora, yes, I am willing to dismiss this case without prejudice. As I stated, I've since been, received annual reports from 1996 and 1997 that show Mayor Howard participating and being the vice president, and I did my own research in the historic section, where I found an annual report from 1960 and 1961, showing both the mayor traditionally being the vice president of the board, as well as the council president serving on committees. This was what the whole dispute was about, and I now have it. I don't need to see the books, I don't need to see the books and records to understand this. I'm willing to dismiss without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I guess, say, one of the things of having served as a public attorney, there's often confusion about who your client is, and that is one of the challenges that you can find yourself in. So I think that is the challenge here of interpreting, was Counsel O'Malley the client, or was the whole council? I think we made clear that the whole council really is who the city solicitor's office should be responding to, and making sure that is, that the council has that backing. But, I mean, I do have to say that, you know, Counsel O'Malley has put on the record that a lot of the momentum here was because of a letter that came from the lawyer of the trustees, you know, that saying that they were, did not agree with disclosing some records. So I think it is, you know, I've listened to Counsel O'Malley, I'm able to work with him, I know he's not infallible, neither am I, but he has listened, and you can, he is here, saying that he's willing to both, you know, withdraw this, to, you know, have it dismissed without prejudice, and set up a committee who will work with the trustees. So I just think that, you know, that is something, that it's an unusual situation, and that I think that, you know, one reason we have a council is to help make group decisions and to have people listen. I think that Counsel O'Malley has listened. He has someone who cares deeply about his community, and, you know, it's, you're working with the relationships there. So I, I could say, I have, I worked with him to get that order and get him to focus on trying to rebuild trust with the trustees. I'm willing to work on that. I just think that it sets a bad precedent in the future, that one misstep, and suddenly you're toast as a council president. That was why I was so insistent on having a more substantial process. It's not even clear if we somehow vote on something tonight, we need eight votes to even decide the next step. So I just think that, you know, Counsel O'Malley has listened. I think the other thing, just related to litigation, you heard Attorney Sammy talk about the details of the procedures, and, you know, one of the things that I never really did as an attorney, and if you're an attorney, you respect attorneys that are, who are litigators. It's the most difficult job, because you have sometimes immutable timeframes, and you have to, you could, you're not, you could be violating your code of ethics if you are not responding to the timeframes of a lawsuit. So it is the type of thing, so you have to really respect that, and I think it is something that unless you've been through the fire, like our solicitors have been, and Counsel O'Malley's not, you don't really, it's hard to understand that. So I just think it is the type of thing that, you know, I think it is, Counsel O'Malley has, you know, in a course of relatively short time, come around and apologized to the council, and is reaching out to the trustees to mend this relationship and focus on going forward. So I see no need to just have someone that is, you know, going to come in for three months. Let's get on with business, and Counsel O'Malley's who we vote on in January, and we can go on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Seminelli.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I just, again, I'm going to say that legally, I mean, again, referring to the legal department, do we have, like, any precedent anywhere else on something like this happening and taking place, and how did they handle it? If we don't know?
No. Short answer, no.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Seega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so really quickly, for everybody at home, the emails that Counsel O'Malley just passed out, he didn't send till Friday, after the agenda was posted and after these papers were posted for the public to see, and for Counsel O'Malley to see, that his actions had consequences, okay? And Counsel O'Malley has come around, but he has only come around and listened since this agenda's been posted, okay? And while I appreciate Counselor McDonald looking to try and find ways for that we can move forward, I do not think moving forward with Counsel O'Malley as the president of this council is the right thing to do. Why would the Board of Trustees of the Malden Public Library want to work with him moving forward? If he, if this paper that he just presented that said we should have all received, which I did not, like Counsel Spatafora, and I checked my email today, I've not received anything about, from any whistleblower regarding anything about the public library. The only thing I received was two public comments. I don't know how we can move forward and trust that you're going to work alongside of the public library, the Board of Trustees at the public library. So I think that, you know, maybe, again, in the future, we may want to vote to elect U.S. Council President again, but I think right now, the right thing for us to do is vote on these papers. It's quarter past 10, almost 20 past 10. We haven't even passed the budget yet, and I think we need to move on these papers, and unfortunately, I think that we need to, I make a motion that we remove Counsel O'Malley as the president of the city council.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you. And so, kind of building off of that a little bit, and I understand that Counsel O'Malley tonight says, you know, that he wants to work, and he wants to listen, and he, you know, wants to dismiss, but, you know, two weeks ago, when we get the agendas on the Thursday, he knew at that point, he might not have had any idea before it was filed, but he knew at that point that this was not going in the right direction. But then, again, he waited till the next Tuesday, as Counsel Spatafora pointed out, to have the trustees served and the director of the library served at the library in front of her staff. So he knew that this is not going right, and still had them served on the Tuesday. And today, as he's talking about having dismissed, the emails that he sent out to the defendant's attorney was from today at 12:12.
And yesterday.
And yesterday, but today at 12:12, and he was putting together a formal motion, but the high level, so he, it sounds like he's going to dismiss as long as he gets his way, and this is the high-level things. So to me, that doesn't say, "I'm going to dismiss without prejudice, let's try to figure this out and go back to that committee, that, you know, working group." It says, "At 12:12, I'll dismiss as long as you give me what I want." So I don't think that that says, he might say it right now, and unfortunately, maybe we should have said that two weeks ago, but we didn't. So we're still at the same spot that, you know, the will of the body was not to move forward. We moved forward, and the only reason, right now, it seems to be, motion to dismiss is as long as he gets his way.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I'm just going to keep this brief. I wanted to respond to something I think might have been directed at me, so I just want to be very clear with the Malden Public Libraries, and how much I've always supported them. I did vote, just to be clear, to withdraw the lawsuit. That was never an issue. My issue, what I have right now, is to vote on, as a council president, on my colleague, whether or not to remove him from the council president, which I do not believe. I believe him when he says that he's going to, well, I see it here, that he's going to withdraw the lawsuit. And I am also going to say that I've never found it hard to work with him, but that's just my, we all have different opinions, we all have different work styles. So I won't be supporting this, but again, just wanted to make sure it's nothing to do with the library. Everybody there knows that. I go to all the library events, sometimes I see some of the other people here for my council, you know, my counselors, sometimes I don't, but I'm always there, so nothing to do with the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, for the final time, just to clarify the timeline that Counselor Crowe and Counselor Seega mentioned, the reason why I sent this email on Thursday is because I received this email on Thursday from their attorney, Mr. McBride, at 1:42 p.m. He said, "Dear Attorney Sami and O'Malley, please see the attached email that I have e-filed today on behalf of all of the defendants." And it's also important to know that this attorney represents all of the defendants, including the director of the library. This statement that the library, that people are unrepresented is not true. I responded based on the fact that he sent that. At 6:00, I wrote the email at night, but it's inappropriate to send emails late at night, and I had it sent at 6:00 in the morning. It's the oldest emails on the last page. The original email came on Thursday. The most recent emails at the front. I've been, I've been trying to take the off-ramp, y'all. Thank you. I appreciate the chance.
You're all set. Okay.
Court of Information? Court of Information?
Yeah, you have the floor, Counselor Spatafora.
Counsel O'Malley, you sent an email to the Library Trustees 11:30 at night after a trustee meeting, when I did my open meeting law, when I did a Freedom of Information Act. So don't say you wait, you do not believe sending emails late at night. You sent an email to our librarian saying she did not do a good job at 11:30 at night after a meeting. So don't build a narrative and not have the facts to back it up, because I can show you the email. 11:30 at night after a meeting, you sent that email.
Let's call the questions. Are we ready to call the roll?
So a motion to remove Counsel O'Malley from the seat of the presidency was made by Counsel Seega, seconded by Counselor Crowe, so a yes vote would be to remove. A no vote would allow Counsel O'Malley to stay in the presidency. Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Can you read that?
Yep, so a yes vote would remove Counsel O'Malley from his seat, a no vote would allow him to stay in the chair. Motion to remove.
No.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Olinahan.
I'm sorry, Ryan, but yes.
Counsel McDonald.
No.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora. Counsel Spatafora, would you unmute? This is a motion.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow.
No.
Counsel O'Malley. So that motion passes by a 7 to 3 vote.
Counselor Spatafora.
I make motions, I make a motion to open up nominations for the city council president for the rest of this term, for this year.
So that is Paper 315.
Second.
But we also have Paper 314 before that.
Oh, yeah, we got to do that one first.
We have to do Paper 314.
Paper 314-25, order that the city council will vote whether to suspend Council Rule 10.01 for the purpose of opening nominations to seat a new council president to fulfill Counsel O'Malley's term for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year.
Counselor, sorry, Counsel Seega for the paper.
I make that motion.
Second.
So we need a, we need a roll call. My apologies. Any discussion on the motion?
We'd be, that's what the dead was.
Yeah. Counsel O'Malley.
You got a comment?
Yeah, I just, I also just want to point out that, you know, as Counsel Winslow stated, the last vote that you all took is likely not valid. I likely will be appealing that, as is my right, and so I'm going to object to taking up the rest of these as invalid.
But it's quite, which is pretty general as well. Motion to suspend.
So...
You can't do that.
You still have the floor. Oh, sorry, I don't know.
And so I would ask that we do not suspend the rules, is what I'm saying, which means, which needs a supermajority.
We have a motion. Do we not have a second on that?
Yeah, she's seconded it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules.
So...
Do we have enough people for a...
We would need eight votes in order to suspend, so a yes vote would be to suspend council rules. Counsel Cologne Hayes.
No.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Olinahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
No.
Counsel O'Malley.
No.
So the rules have been suspended by an 8 to 3 vote.
Oh, okay. Counselor Spatafora, you have just...
I made that motion.
I want to make a motion to open up nominations.
There's already a paper to do that, so we, Paper 315-25, order that the city council will open nominations to vote on a council president for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year, so I am hearing that Spatafora and Seega have made the motion and seconded. Counsel Cologne Hayes. Oh, sorry.
Counselor, I actually have Counselor Taylor first.
I was going to make a nomination.
Oh, okay. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, I just want a point of order that this is out of order, and that I object to the taking up this matter.
Your objection is noted.
Did you want... No, just reread what...
Did you want me to reread the paper?
A request to reread the paper, no problem.
So the order is that the city council will open nominations to vote on council president for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year. Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Olinahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
No.
Counsel O'Malley.
No.
Okay, so that is a 9 to 2 vote, the nominations are now open.
Craig's got his hand up.
No, I'm going to defer. I'll wait, I think. Is anybody else got their hand up?
Yep, Counselor Taylor.
I'll wait, I'll defer to Counsel Taylor.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to nominate Counsel Olinahan.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Craig, did you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I seconded it. Counsel Linehan.
Discussion? Are there any other nominations? Move to close nominations is...
I'll make a motion.
So, I don't think I can make that motion?
No, you can. I'll make a motion to close nominations.
I was asking if that's what Counselor Taylor was moving. Okay. Okay, so on a, on a motion by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Seega to close nominations, we'll call a roll.
Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Counselor Linehan.
We're closing nominations right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counselor O'Malley. Okay, so nominations have been closed, and there is a motion on the floor to have Linehan as the next council president. Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega. Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Counselor Linehan.
Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counselor O'Malley. Okay, so that is a ten to one vote. Counselor Linehan is the new council president for the remainder of this 2025 calendar year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I think we should take a recess.
I think that's a good idea.
Counselor Seega.
And I can only hope that nobody up here is gonna reconsider their vote, and we have to do this all over again next Tuesday, because the vote will not change, trust me.
I think you just jinxed us.
Yeah, you said it.
Well, I'm just putting it out there, because I'm pretty sure it's coming.
I think it is too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess.
Counsel will come to order? Okay, next order of business.
Okay, we are back in session. We are going back to paper 307-25, I think. We're going all the way back to pa-- yeah, pretty much.
Are we really?
307, it's on page three.
This one?
Yep.
Okay. Paper 307-25.
Counselor Semenelli? Counselor Semenelli?
Didn't even get to eat my potato chips.
Paper 307-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, 12.12 use regu-- use regulations as hereby amended to add 12.32.030E Certificate of Registration for Short Term Rentals.
Okay, Counselor Cologne Hayes for the paper.
Oh, thank you. So, just a recap of what happened a couple of weeks ago. There, you know, we've been exploring strategies to boost revenue and looking at like complex challenges and we were looking at creative, out-of-the-box thinking. So, the intent of this ordinance is to create a framework within the city of Malden that permits short-term rentals in a way that carefully balances private benefits with public interests. It aims to protect the city's housing stock from being converted solely to short-term rental use, preserve the residential character of neighborhoods, maintaining housing availability for long-term residents, and ensure public health, safety, and welfare are upheld. So, I had truly hoped that this would be a first from Malden and that this proposal, which was created by residents and brought before the council, that that would happen. But unfortunately, we did find that there was a $1,500 fee, which would fall upon the residents. So, we came together and agreed that I would sponsor this ordinance, even though I want to make it very clear to anyone watching tonight that the credit belongs solely entirely to those who put the hard work into develop it. So, I'm just opening it up and looking probably to refer it to a joint, I think we discussed referring it to a joint ordinance, community engagement and inclusion.
I think we were talking about joint planning and ordinance.
Joint planning, okay.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Any discussion? Nobody wants to discuss anything right now, is what I'm guessing. We'd be looking at do joint planning and ordinance.
Planning Board and ordinance, joint session.
Yeah, yeah. So, this was, Counselor Cologne Hayes had refiled.
Don't you think we should just do it to ordinance first to have a conversation about it and then send it? We've got 14 days to refer it into Planning Board. Once it's on this agenda, we have to send it into the Planning Board within 14 days. So, I think the way it goes, Michelle, you can help me with this if I'm wrong, the ordinance committee does have the right to do their own meeting and hearing independent of, but we also do have to send it to a joint session at the same time.
No.
Is that? Yeah, it doesn't, so I think I, go ahead and answer that, but I want to add the law.
I would just encourage you, given the magnitude of this issue and the complexity, that you do discuss it before you send it for hearing. In the past, when things are sent immediately for hearing without the council and the ordinance committee having really a good understanding, it often gets delayed at that point. So, I, we did it with the affordable housing, the IZ ordinance, with the Malden River ordinance. It was fully vetted before it was sent for hearing.
I agree.
I understand, and I've seen the paper, somebody did spend some time with it, but I don't know who's really familiar with it, now that it's a count, it's being proposed by Counselor Hayes. So, I would recommend it be discussed, but it is true, what the clerk is saying, if it's not referred for public hearing within 14 days, you will need to re-refer it, will need to come back in and be referred. So, you know, the issue is with the summer coming up, so, and we're already, if you refer it tonight or next week, you're looking at a midsummer hearing. We'll have to do the hearing in the middle of the summer.
So, how about if, what if we did, referred it to the community engagement committee to have community discussions before?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that committee, but I mean, I just, I'm saying with an ordinance this complex, it's, and if you push it forward for hearing, it's just historically, you do see some issues with it.
So, if it goes to a hearing, it has to be referred?
Within 14 days of tonight, it's being introduced tonight.
Does that mean it has to be taken up? So, I'm concerned, my concern is that you're right, we're not going to have enough time to discuss anything within a council, and if it fails, or it's just a hearing, right? So, there's nothing that, I want to avoid, what I'm trying to avoid is that whole thing where it doesn't, you can't come back again for either six months or two years.
Right, right, and that will, right, that's the, those are the future steps that could possibly happen. If you send it for hearing and then you want to make substantive changes, you can't do that. That's when you have to go back. The idea with discussing it and understanding what you're proposing is you may want to make substantive changes now, what you send for hearing should be what you could
Possibly vote on.
Possibly ordain, or at least largely not need to make any substantive changes, because you wouldn't be able to do that, you'd need to do another hearing. So, that's why, you know, I know you're in a tight schedule.
Yeah, I mean, it's not any time, you know, it's not urgent, but, yeah, I guess I'm going to wait to hear like what, so, it's not like an urgent matter, so, I would rather have it discussed before it goes somewhere, you know.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I know, I, I know last week when this came up as the, as the petition, you know, this is a complex issue, it's going to be some controversy, and I think it's, we should have some sort of community forum before it goes to, I mean, it can happen if we have to just schedule it and do what we got to do, but I think it's important that we have a community forum where people can raise some issues more directly to the council before we have the actual hearing. So, so that's just my concern, because it is, you know, there's, there's issues about impacts on affordable housing, quality of life issues, so, it's not something that's, you know, you know, I think it's something we need to make sure there's some opportunity to have a more informal discussion with the community. So, I mean, I'm happy to start out with a joint community engagement rules and ordinance committee meeting, so we can, you know, get that feedback, and we might even be able to come up with a alternative proposal or whatever that can be shared with the planning board or whatever, something like that. So, so that's, that's really, I just think it's important, it's, it's a complex thing to have the first community input come at a planning board rules and ordinance here. I think it's tough, tough on the planning board, and it's, it's just a tough process. So, that's my suggestion is that we try to, I mean, it's going to have to happen in the summer probably, it's just the way it is, but.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor, you had your light on before, okay, Counselor Sika.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really quickly, so, if there isn't any urgency to this matter, if we, if Counselor Cologne Hayes was to withdraw this paper till September, could it be reworded and not changing the zoning to allow us to send it to her citizen engagement committee, so we can just have talks about potential Airbnb, instead of it saying us to amend our zoning? Like, is that a way around this? Because this paper is actually regarding zoning. So, if we don't refer it within 14 days, then we can't discuss it. But maybe if we withdraw this, and we come up with different language for September to be able to send it to CEIC, have some neighborhood, community engagement meetings on this to see if the interest is there, and then, then she put forth the paper that goes to joint planning and ordinance, because this is a topic that probably should not be discussed in the summertime. Nobody's paying attention to what's going on in the months of July and August, I believe. And I don't know about anybody else, but the majority of the calls I get in Woody are about rooming houses, Airbnbs, like this type of thing, people keep coming in and out of my neighbor's house with luggage, you know, so I think, I think this is going to be a pretty hot topic for our residents, whether they're for them or against them, and I would hate to have it fall in the summer months when nobody's paying attention, and when we may not even be able to get a quorum for, for one of these meetings. So, I don't know if those are some suggestions to withdraw this one, come up with wording that allows us to send it to CEIC, and then, once we figure it all out in CEIC, then she can resubmit this paper to a joint planning and ordinance when we get back.
And just to be clear, tabling it does not stop the clock on the hearing, so it would have to be withdrawn, and then even next week, refile something to send to CEIC for like a, like to Counselor Winslow's point, like a community meeting or forum at some point?
Yeah, and she could do, she could do her CEIC meetings over the summer if she wanted to, yeah.
And you could even record them, so people could watch it.
So, you don't stop the clock, you know what I mean? Because they'll be on Teams now, because our meetings are now on Teams, but I, just, just to make sure that we do have a deep discussion on this before we just send it right to change our zoning.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sika. Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, I think sending it both places would probably make sense, and they can always open the hearing in the summer, but they don't have to close the hearing. But, yes, state law requires it get referred within 14 days to a hearing. The hearing doesn't have to happen in 14 days, but it has to be sent within 14 days, that's state law. The hearing can be opened and not closed.
It has to be, if I may, it has to be referred within 14 days if you want to move it forward for public hearing. If you don't want to move it forward for public hearing, it doesn't need to be referred within 14 days. So, that, that, that time clock starts if you're starting the zoning amendment process. If you're saying you're not ready to start the zoning amendment process, you, you wouldn't refer it. The concern I have, if I may, one of the councils brought up about the quorum over the summer, we've had issues with getting a quorum to do a joint public hearing with ordinance committee over the summer. That happened, I think, the last two summers, honestly. So, you know, once the clock starts ticking, we have to, you know, move forward, that's all I can say. So, if, for zoning amendments, I will also offer, I don't know that you need to withdraw I don't think it needs to be changed. I think another committee can discuss a proposed amendment. It doesn't have the impact of amending the zoning, but, so I, I, I don't know that you need to withdraw it. I, I just think that, um, you know, you could discuss any idea. We did that again with the inclusionary zoning. I think we did it with, um, and again, this is like the third version of inclusionary zoning. One of them, is one of the councils familiar, was sent immediately for hearing and it blew up, right? So then we took a different process. Lots of meetings, lots of discussion until we got the final paper. Then that, well, the final, what we thought was the best version, let's call it, that was sent for hearing.
No, yeah, that's exactly what I'm.
So that's, that's what I thought you were maybe trying to do.
I, um, no.
Oh, hang on, let me put your light on, Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you.
Uh, you're good now.
It was, again, my, I really wanted this to work where the residents came forward because that's a wonderful thing. But now that, um, I'm sponsoring it, I would like it to go somewhere that we could still discuss it over the summer. But maybe, um, if you're saying that we can just refer it to the, um, the CEIC committee, I think that'd be great. We can have some, um, discussions over it, rework it, come back, you know, um, in Septa, or just refer it to, when it's ready and when we have public feedback.
You need to reword it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, Michelle, my only question is if we're refer, if we're referring this to a different committee, we then can't really reword the zoning language, right? Michelle, sorry.
I'm sorry, you're asking.
Yes, I apologize. So if we, if we send this exact paper to a different committee, we can't really change the zoning. We'd have to file a new paper if we change a lot of the wording, right?
Oh, yeah, you, yeah. Or if no wording's changed, you'll just come back and file the same paper.
I guess I'm confused how it doesn't need to be withdrawn. If it's going to potentially change a lot, if it procedurally feels like we might as well withdraw it, if it's, if we anticipate right now that it's going to change a lot.
I mean, you, you can withdraw it. I'm not saying you can't withdraw it. I just thought, you know, to save time. You know, any of your committees can discuss anything that's proposed, right? So you would be discussing a zoning amendment, knowing that you're not making any decision on the zoning amendment. You're just getting feedback in to form, you know, revise the potential, revise the draft of the zoning amendment.
Okay.
I, I think that's what it would be.
That's what I would like to do, then, refer to the CEIC.
The clock wouldn't be ticking on the zoning amendment process if you don't refer it.
Counselor McDonald, or you, I felt like you were trying to interject on that point.
Yeah, I, I, I was, just a point of order about the, so the paper, as I read it, is not necessarily a zoning paper. Now, I think that the, you have to change the zoning clearly to try to move this forward. But other cities and towns do not necessarily put short-term rental regulation in zoning. They just put it in other ordinances. Now, our zoning does contain a piece, and I actually emailed the sponsors about this when they had emailed me, um, Counselor Cologne Hayes. So I'll share this with you too. I, I'm excited to have this discussion. I think we should refer it. I'm just saying, it doesn't actually, I don't actually think we need to put licensing around short-term rentals if we're to move forward that in zoning, which is a more complicated process. We could put it where we put other types of business licenses, which is in another part of the code. But then we definitely do need to address the parts of the zoning that pertain to short-term rentals, which is in the use table. And I think there's something in, um, accessory dwelling units, maybe somewhere else. So my point is just, we're going to have to do that anyway. There's going to have to be an amendment anyways because the paper as written doesn't repeal the part of the use regulation table that prohibits short-term rentals in zoning. So I think we should just go ahead, refer the paper as it is to a joint CEIC Rules and Ordinance Committee. Folks can meet over the summer and discuss. And then we'll figure out procedurally what it takes to be able to move forward with that, uh, in the fall.
Yeah, I'm good with that. That's what I wanted to, to do.
I'm sorry, say that, Councilor Cologne Hayes? Say that again.
I said, no, that is what I was thinking would happen. Um, and just to talk about it before it goes out maybe to a hearing would be the CEIC. If we want to do a joint ordinance, I think that's great too. Um, but to talk about it during the summer and not refer it over to a hearing until we have a lot of feedback and it's really ready. Yeah.
Um, all right, I'm going to take Counselor Crowe and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you. Um, I just, again, I'm kind of confused if it's on here now and we have 14 days to refer it. So does it need to be, I mean, maybe not withdrawn, but, because I agree with having these long conversations. I know a lot of the petitioners, and they live in my ward, and we've had this conversation a lot over the years. And it's, it's much more complicated than what meets the eye. But it, could, do we, should we amend this that doesn't have, because I'm, I'm not sure what the triggering factor is if it's on here and then it has to be referred in 14 days? Right? Sorry.
I can only speak to what I know. So if a paper is filed, it's introduced to as a zoning amendment, and you don't refer it within 14 days, the, the, the process didn't start. Okay, you didn't complete the procedural step. Just like if we don't hold the hearing within 65 days of receipt, we didn't complete the procedural step. There's procedural error in that. So if you feel more comfortable to withdraw it, I, I was just trying to, you know, help you move it along. But I, I, you just, if you don't refer it within 14 days, you, that, there's a defect in that zoning amendment process. So you don't refer it, we don't schedule it for hearing, it's eventually going to expire.
And it sounds like if we're going to make some amendments on this, you mean, then we can, you, you just put the paper on the docket again.
Later on, yeah.
And then send what, we have a final.
You'd introduce the paper or introduce a new paper?
Right.
Yeah, so right now, we would just refer this to the CEIC committee, um, for discussions, um, which I have no problem with. And then we submit later when we, you know, get feedback.
Right.
Mm-hmm, and then, and then just let this run out because we did not refer it to the Planning Board. Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I defer to, you know, your, your parliamentarian. If you're familiar with the rule of the council that says something different, I'm just telling you what my experience has been over the years. If a paper doesn't get referred, the process doesn't start. That's happened on a couple petitions, not a lot. It's happened because occasionally you, it gets introduced and you realize, hey, we don't want to change the zoning. We don't want to change the laws. We don't want to start this process. So, and it, it either ends at ordinance or it just doesn't come out.
Because I want to send it to the Community Inclusion Engagement to have discussions.
I get that, but my.
Counselor Seega. Yeah, hang on one second. You're good.
My question just is, we, at the beginning of this conversation, we didn't want to send it to ordinance because the clock was going to start ticking. So what's the difference if we send it to CEIC?
Because you're saying.
I thought it was because it was the wording, because this stipulates that we're looking to change our zoning.
No, what she.
So I'm just a little confused by.
What I heard, um, Counsel, when I heard Romero, yeah.
I just don't want to do the wrong thing.
11:20, can we leave the question?
Yeah.
The question, well, the question is where are we referring it? If we're referring it to.
CEIC.
If the clock doesn't start though, it should go to.
That's not what we just heard.
Is, Counsel Cologne, is that where you want to refer it to, to CEIC?
Yeah, if the, um, unless the city solicitor wants to step in with this. But I'm trusting what, um, Ms. Romero just said about the clock doesn't start.
We can also follow up on this tomorrow and we can change, we can.
Okay, okay, correct? So let's refer to the CEIC.
Okay, let's take the vote, let's take the vote to refer to CEIC. We can also, we can check on that tomorrow.
Just, point of order, is that, is that only the CEIC, not jointly with the Rules and Ordinance?
To begin with, to get some feedback. And then I, I'm sure, like after a meeting or two, we will join. I'll invite them. Actually, I'd like everybody.
Any, everybody would be welcome to attend, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Let's just start it simple.
All right, then let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley. Okay, so that's been referred to CEIC.
Next order of business.
Paper 308 dash 25, resolved. That it is the sense of the city council that they wish to express their gratitude and admiration to His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama, in celebration of his upcoming 90th birthday. His Holiness was born on July 6, 1935, to a modest farming family and enthroned as a spiritual leader in February 1940. His Holiness has devoted his life to the principles of universal compassion, nonviolence, and environmental sustainability while advancing the cause of human dignity and freedom. The members of the Malden City Council extend their heartfelt wishes to many, for many years to come of continued health, happiness, and wisdom, and encourages Maldonians to engage in acts of service to others as a way of honoring His Holiness's profound legacy. And this was sponsored by Counsel Winslow and O'Malley.
Okay, Counselor Winslow for the paper.
Yeah, and, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, Carol Anne, thank you very much for directing up the language. Um, I did receive, um, an invitation from the Boston, um, uh, committee, um, of the Tibetan Association of Boston, who's planning an event July 10th at the State Capitol to honor the Dalai Lama and really feature Tibetan culture, uh, event. And so, um, I shared that with, uh, because I think it was maybe, it should have been directed to Counsel O'Malley at the time. And, but I, I, they, I did reach out. They did say that the whole council is invited to go to that event. I think it's July 10th, 11 a.m. at the State House. So that was really just to put this resolve there and that way we can vote on it and then people could sign, sign it and we can hand that out at, um, uh, the event. I'm, I'm planning to go definitely, so, um, but, um, that was just really the intent of it. Just, um, to, you know, uh, respond to the invitation from the Tibetan community and, uh, and be able to give a, a resolve, um, on behalf of the council, so that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. What was the date you said, July?
July 10th, um, yeah, July, July 10th.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, good. July 10th, 11 a.m. at the State House. So, um, so everybody's invited.
Okay.
And, um, so I just wanted to be able to hand a, a resolve and, uh, love to have anybody come out for that. So, um, but it just, uh, you know, we do have, uh, many people from that part of the world, um, in Malden that, uh, do follow the Dalai Lama and he's inspirational people for a lot of, a lot of people, so.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we adopt the res, the resolve, thanks.
Counsel O'Malley, do you want to speak?
No.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, on a second, by Counselor Cologne Hayes, we'll take a roll call vote.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley. Okay, so unanimously passed that resolve.
Okay, fantastic. Next order of business.
Um, three enrolled ordinances, paper 153 dash 25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, Title 12, Chapter 12, Section 090, Subsection B, off-site, off-street parking lots, and Title 12, Chapter 20, Section 020, Subsection I, general off-street parking requirements is hereby amended.
Okay, do I have a motion to ordain?
Motion.
Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous vote. The paper's been ordained. Paper 172 dash 25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, 12.08.040 floodplains, 12.12.110 floodplain districts, 12.32.060 definition zoning, are hereby amended to include new regulations as required by FEMA so that referenced areas will remain eligible for FEMA-sponsored flood insurance programs.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley. Okay, ordained unanimously. Paper 186 dash 25. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, Title 12 zoning, is hereby amended as follows to be considered in conjunction with paper 153, series of 2025, to clarify and update existing usable open space requirements and regulations regarding paving of yard areas of residential properties.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
That was ordained unanimously. Paper 310 dash 25, committee report. The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Papers 236, series of 2025, haven't considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this paper favorably as presented to the full council.
Um, a motion to, I'm so sorry, I was trying to get a bottle of water. Motion to accept the committee report? Do I, okay. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
The committee report has been received for paper 236 dash 25. 236 dash 25, order the mayor will submit the fiscal year 2026 annual appropriation orders for the General Fund, Watersewa Enterprise Fund, Community Preservation Fund, and Cable Access Fund. This is our budget.
Okay, Counselor McDonald for the committee report. For the paper.
Uh, for the paper, yes. Well, friends, it's not early, um, but let me just say that this vote comes after really a lot of discussion, uh, in the Finance Committee about the, uh, about the budget plan for next year. The fact that we're, uh, you know, making very few changes, uh, based on what the mayor has proposed. We did not make any changes in committee. We did have a very good discussion with the schools, um, about their budget realities and how they're managing some of the increasing costs around special education and transportation and so on. Um, but this is really a status quo budget. And so what that means is that, you know, as soon as this vote is done, our work begins to be able to be prepared to have a vote this time next year that has the fiscal prudence to make sure that we're on a sustainable path for our budget. That means more income and less expense in one way or another. So I think we've all said that. I hope that we can show our support for this budget that will give us the time to dig into these things. We did two resolutions last year about the need to grow the tax base, about the need to tackle the school funding formula. There's some slow progress on some of those items, but we'll need to continue. I really appreciated Counsel Winslow putting forward the resolution specifically about the trash deficit and our solid waste, income and expense. So those are the kinds of things we're going to have to look into carefully. So you have my commitment to do that over the summer. I said I would get you a couple of data points and summaries from conversations we have. Hadn't had the chance to do that yet, but we will do that over the summer. And just my commitment as Finance Chair to be in good communication and collaboration with you all and with the mayor's team as we really dig into what it's going to take over the next year to make sure that our budget, our city budget, is on a firm footing to support our staff and support our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Counsel Seega. Everybody fell asleep, I think.
We'll just go without them.
I personally did as well.
Counsel McDonald's motion to adopt the budget. Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega. Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Nope.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow. Counsel O'Malley. That's been passed 10 to 1.
Okay, next order of business.
Paper 311-25, committee report. The Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, to whom was referred Paper 193, series of 2025, haven't considered the same, make the following report.
On Counselor Crowe's motion to accept the committee report, you're up.
Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega. Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow. Counsel O'Malley. The committee report has been received for Paper 1... Well, actually, who wants to tell us what the committee report is?
Counsel Crowe. It was an easy one, right? Okay, Counsel, here, sorry, Counsel Crowe for the committee report.
So the Personnel and Appointments met this evening to confirm Robert Foley, Bobby Foley, to the Redevelopment Authority Board. It's actually, we're supposed to be in the consent agenda because it's a reappointment, and Mr. Foley has been on the Housing, I mean, the Redevelopment Authority Board for quite a long time and has done quite a lot of work and has worked with Counsel Linehan when she was serving on that board. And so it did go to committee, but we spoke about it, and now we make a motion that we confirm this appointment.
Second. Okay, second by Counselor Taylor. We'll call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes, sorry.
Counsel Seega. Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Winslow. Counsel O'Malley. That has been confirmed unanimously.
Okay.
So...
So where...
Nope, hang on a second.
We have something else at the end.
We've got two things at the end.
Just personal privilege, do we have some, do we have to take anything off the table?
What, I don't know. Counsel Cologne Hayes, because you resubmitted the short-term rental ordinance, did you want to untable and place on file Paper 278-25?
No, not, I don't...
You want to leave that right where it is tonight? Okay. Then that's your agenda.
Okay, then does anybody have personal privilege? Okay, Counselor Simonelli.
I think you did it on purpose. Is that how it's going to be, Mr. President? So, anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know. I had a little mishap with my phone, fell in the water while I was shaving. So I had to get a new phone number. And, yeah, just letting everybody know. And I wanted to give the phone number out to everybody. I know people have been worried about me, and I really appreciate that. So my new number is 857-214-0901. Call me anytime, it's out there. We're going to make the necessary changes. And I actually might be able to get the other phone back, the phone number or something. It's very complicated. But anyway, in the meantime, you can call me on that. I got a couple of phones running around. I know, I'm collecting everybody's. And the other thing that I wanted to say was, you know, sometimes I don't sleep at night. Somebody's calling me already, how's that? So I don't sleep that well sometimes. And I just want to let everybody know that, you know, a couple of times I had went out last week around 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, I usually go for a ride, grab a coffee. And I just want to say that, you know, while everybody's sleeping in their beds, you can have confidence in the Malden Police Department to let them, to know that they are out there. Because when I went riding around, they were everywhere. And I, you know, I called the chief and, you know, sometimes we don't always give compliments where we should. We complain a lot, we don't always give compliments. So I just want to say that every step, every corner I went around throughout the city, there was a Malden police cruiser at every corner. So while you're safe at home, sleeping at 3:00, 3:30, 4:00 in the morning, you can rest assured that the Malden Police Department is on their job and we are protected and we are safe. Thank you, Madam President, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Winslow.
I actually want to thank Bob Knox's crew. We had a few maintenance issues at Trachten Park, and they were out of, finally, we got our tree pits redone. And there was, he padded the tennis post that someone, a kid got hurt on. So just thank you, Bob, for taking the initiative there. Thanks, great.
Okay. And Counselor McDonald, do you have your hand raised?
I do, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to thank Counsel O'Malley for the month that he did serve as president of this council. I think we were able to accomplish some great things with his leadership. And I wanted to thank you, Counsel President Linehan, for agreeing to serve in this very complicated and difficult transition. But I really appreciate the leadership that you're bringing to this role. So thank you both.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Seeing no other lights, I just want to remind folks that Thursday this week is Juneteenth. There is a celebration, of course, that the city is hosting at the Salem Wood School. I think a lot of city services, including city hall, is also closed. So just want to let the public know, just as a reminder. And then also for ourselves, that does push back our filing deadline. So have to get anything in for next week by 10 a.m. tomorrow. Just... And, do you, actually, Karen, why don't I just put on your light so you, because I know you're really involved in that? Are you sure? Okay, just want to give, on behalf of Counselor Cologne Hayes, she's reminding me that the Malden Juneteenth Committee is hosting the events at the Salem Wood. And it's at 11 a.m. as it starts, right? With the city. So always a fantastic event. Encourage anybody watching to stop by, it's always a load of fun. Anybody else, last call? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, on motion by Counsel Crowe, seconded by Counselor Taylor, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Crowe. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega. Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Spatafora. Would you like to adjourn Counsel Spatafora?
I'm sorry, I had on mute. Yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I'm sorry.
Counsel Winslow. Counsel O'Malley. We are adjourned at 11:38.
Have a great night, everyone.